Good evening, everyone. It's 6:00 PM. I'd just like to welcome everybody to our committee of the whole meeting this evening for September 21st, 2020. I'd like to call a meeting to order and ask for an adoption of the agenda.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Move the Council off the adoption of Jenny agenda. Any additions to the agenda from council? Okay, seeing none to administration, any changes or any additions to the agenda, Mr. Farbrother?
Just a very brief COVID update.
Hey. Very brief COVID update, and I think we will do that right before the RCMP presentation, Simon, Mr. I saw Mr. Farbrother, if that's okay with you. Put that in there. Okay. Thank you. Seeing nothing further, I will call the question on the motion for the adoption of the agenda. Okay, thank you very much. That's been carried. Okay, Mr. Farbrother, to you on a update on COVID.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The current case numbers in Spruce Grove is nine active cases, four in Parkland County and two in Stoney Plain. Slight decrease from the end of last week, but just to remind people that these are numbers of the basically the highest numbers that we've experienced throughout the whole last six months. Though I think sort of psychologically and culturally, we're getting kind of used to having numbers out there. Having said that, you know, we continue to keep in contact with the province in terms of where the city set since it's starting to approach a watch case. Case law, which would then have an impact in terms of the face mask bylaw that council was identified. But at this point in time, we are still below that level. And that level isn't set as a specific number. It is set based on the fact that the province puts the community under a watch category. So we do watch the numbers, but it isn't ultimately the numbers that rise above. Sports facilities that we had mentioned that we were reopening, reopened, have reopened. Seems everything seems to be going pretty smoothly in that regard, which is good. And, you know, the city just continues to monitor the situation and our message just remains the same. It is about social distancing. It is about following strong sanitation guidelines. And it's just being aware that the virus is there. I think recently there was an article, you know, virus, you know, traveling across major continents, you know, attached to a piece of food. So it's not going away anytime soon. So I wouldn't be negative about that, but that's the reality. And that's the update.
Okay, thank you very much. And I just wanted to add a little bit to the update in being in and around Spruce Grove and touching base. I know I went into the Queen Street Medical Center last week. And I was impressed that everybody in that entire building that I crossed was wearing a mask other than one, one person. And so I think some of the mask up stuff that we have going on is going, we're going to continue to encourage everybody to wear masks. And as we keep, keep track of that. But anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Farbrother, and well, thanks for keeping us posted. And as with all of council, we're encouraging people to do those things that prevent the spread of COVID-19. So with that, thank you very much. I'd ask for one of my colleagues on council to make a motion to receive Mr. Farbrother's report for information.
Coming that motion, Mr. Mayor, we accept his report as presented.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Acker. With that, I'll call the question on the motion to accept from information. Thank you very much. That's been carried. Heading on to item number two, we have a presentation this evening, Mr. Rolansky, if you could introduce our presenter on the RCMP.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everyone can hear me, I'm assuming. Yes, as the council's aware, RCP inspector comes approximately three times a year to kind of give an update on some of the stats, but also just the other interesting things related to the detachment. And Inspector Mike Walken is here this evening to do that for this period.
Okay, welcome, Inspector. Council's here and your virtual online and live streaming. So welcome to our first virtual RCMP presentation and go ahead, welcome.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. I guess staying along the same flavor as Mr. Farbrother just spoke about. Our lives as well have been hugely affected and changed, and the way that we do operations has changed as well in not only our local RCMP detachment, but all across Canada. So we have made some changes in our detachment. The positives are we have recognized a number of efficiencies, different ways of going about doing things such as online reporting. Now, not to be critical, but typically changes in the past with such a large organization have taken a very long time. And I think COVID has kind of forced our hand to, to make these changes. And some of them have been beneficial because, like I said, they've, they've made us more efficient and have made us more accessible to the public rather than just coming to the front counter and reporting. We do have online reporting now and a number of different ways that people can access us. So along that line, our front counter, the front door was locked, our front counter was never closed per se over the, over the course of the beginning stages of pandemic. People were limited to coming inside the building. That has changed as of about the third week of June. Our front counter is open again with limited number of wickets. There's two out of four. And we do have a person right inside the main door who basically triages the reason why people are coming in if they have a simple question or can be given some forms or some information and sent back out of the building to either the vehicles to fill in the forms or to report something online. That's what happens if they need a little more help or assistance, or if it's an emergent situation. Obviously, they're referred to the person at the front counter or to an officer who comes out and, and meets them. So it, it did affect our support staff in terms of, you know, having the front counter closed. But now all of our support staff are working in the detachment. One of the benefits of having such a big, nice, beautiful building is we have been able to physically distance everyone safely. We've had OHS come through and make sure that we're, we're compliant and that, and that everything's good. We've had to make a few minor changes with, with plastic barriers, but for the most part, we're, we're doing well. And in terms of the regular member complement, at the beginning stages, in the first few months, we did collapse our plainclothes units. And the reason we did that was simply resourcing to provide and some other detachments. The large detachments in Alberta did this. And typically, we have four separate watches. What we did is we collapsed our plainclothes units, put them back into uniform general duty. And so we had eight watches. And so whenever extra assistance or overtime was required, they relied on what we call their sister watch or their, their mirrored watch. And so it really limited our interaction between the four watches and it eliminated the need for calling members from other detachments to work overtime to help out with shortages. So we did realize a huge cost savings, which will in turn affect the city as well in our overtime costs. That said, our plainclothes units have been slowly put back into action, starting at the beginning of July. And the last one was, was fully staffed here in September. And so we are seeing some good results from having our plainclothes units back up and running. As you may have seen in the media, we've had a couple drug busts right in the city of Spruce Grove. There's been another one in Parkland County, but again, with the tie between rural crime and I shouldn't say rural crime, property crime and the drug culture, the two are tied close hand in hand. So property thefts and, and those kinds of things go along with the drug activity. So if something's taken down in Parkland County, obviously, it will affect the city of Spruce Grove as well. Now, our GIS unit, General Investigation Section, they've been tied up. We have had a couple of very serious files in the last, in the last month. So they've been, they've been tied up working on those. And our community policing unit, most of those, including our school resource officers, went back to the watches. The schools weren't charged for that portion of the members being back on the watches. And the domestic violence unit was the only support unit that we did not collapse because there is a real need for it. And obviously during COVID, the domestic violence continued. And I can talk a little bit about that, maybe when I talk about the statistics, our, our domestic violence rates. But moving to the human resource complement at the detachment. I know that we've spoken throughout the course of my presentations over the few years with you guys. We have an ebb and flow of resources and sometimes we're at high tide, sometimes we're at low tide. To give you an idea of where we're at right now, we're sitting very well. We just recently promoted three corporals, two within the detachment, constables became corporals, and one who actually used to be posted here that was transferred to Ontario and then back to Laduke, and she's coming back. And so one advantage of being a very attractive detachment and desired detachment now is that we're getting some very, very good applicants. In fact, it's unusual for us to have to have two separate committees for this promotion process. And that was necessary for this one because there were so many applicants, which is a good problem to have. In terms of our enhanced policing funding that was provided to us by the city of Spruce Grove, we've spent approximately two thirds of that at this point. And at the request of council and then also looking at various initiatives, public safety being one of them. We did recognize that enforcement, i.e. speeding, distracted driving, impaired driving, as well as patrols in hotspot areas of break and enters, things like that, or the areas that we focused on. There were several patrols on bikes, quads and side by sides in the trail system. And we ran into a lot of people in the evenings out there that were appreciative of the police being on the trails. And then some of that money was also spent for the Black Lives Matter rally that took place in the city. And there was potential for some things to happen with a counter protest group. And overall, the, the protest from both sides went over very, very well, and it was completely peaceful. So that was, that was good to see, just in terms of the money that has been allocated towards the enhanced policing funding. In, in tickets, we have written about a thousand dollars shy of the equivalent of what was provided to us by the city. Now, I understand that you get a percentage of that, but you don't get the entire thing. But just to show that some of the money is coming back to the city through the enforcement initiatives that we had. And as you know, Photoradar took a pause for some time in the city. So our guys were out there doing speed enforcement as well. And we've done some joint initiatives with the community peace officers as well and the traffic unit. When citizens or council members contact us with concerns about problem areas in the city, suspicious activity or speeding, reckless driving, things like that. When we send an email out to the entire detachment, not only do our members get it, the members of the traffic unit get it as well. And so being, having the advantage of being the epicenter for this area of the province that they cover. They, I know that traffic has done a lot of enforcement in, in the city and in surrounding areas as well. Now, with the community policing, just a couple mentions of things that they are working on. Obviously, COVID has changed their life as well. And so doing community policing per se has taken a change. But some of the initiatives that they are working on, rather than attending large group functions and meetings and, and doing that kind of thing. Myself and the corporal from community policing attended a meeting in Red Deer, and that was to do with an initiative of doing a registry for all the CCTV or surveillance video that people have. And it's a voluntary registry. We're the only ones with the access to that. And when we have a particular crime in the area that we're looking for information on, if people have registered, we can go ask them to see if they have video. And again, it's voluntary, whether or not people participate. So, but they have seen some success in, in other areas that have this setup, Red Deer and St. Albert being, being two in Alberta. And just one more thing I've mentioned before I go into the statistics. The Light Catch app is something that our crime watch groups have been promoting. And people register and they can provide information, sightings of different suspicious activity. And it has resulted in the solving of at least two crimes in our area. One being a mail or theft of mail or UPS parcels. And the other one being recovery of a stolen vehicle that originated from Calgary and ended up in, I believe, Alberta Beach. And so, like I said, I'll move on to the statistics. I gotta put on my glasses for this because it's just small printing. And in terms, I said this ahead of time, so I'm hoping that you all have a copy of it. But generally speaking, what I'm going to, whenever I speak about a statistic, it will cover from January until the end of August in any respective year that I speak about. So the most current stats that are only about three weeks old. And so the total persons crime in the city of Spruce Grove is up 5% over last year. And if you look at the percentage change from 2016, we're down 1%, which, when you take into account the population growth since then as well, is, is actually very good. So, I mean, 5%, obviously, we would like to see that lower than, than a 5% increase. We would always like to see a decrease. But last year, we saw a huge decrease and it's, it's very hard to maintain those numbers. Now, when we move into property crime, the city of Spruce Grove saw a 19% increase in break and enters and a 37% increase over last year in theft of motor vehicles. And I think as we've spoken before, we talk about prolific offenders and concentrating on them and how our crime reduction unit and our general duty members and our analysts focus on these people when they are released from custody. And depending on how much time they serve and when they get out of custody, it's a very few number of people committing, committing these acts. And so I can tell you that we did see a stark increase theft of motor vehicle in city of Spruce Grove and the town of Stoney Plain as well. But there's one particular person who is now in custody, which I would suspect will result in our stats looking better in the next quarter. But if you take into account all the property crimes, despite break and enters and theft of motor vehicles going up, overall, our total property crime over last year is down 3% and it's down 29% from 2016. And if you take the total criminal code for everything criminal code that we deal with within the city of Spruce Grove, we are very similar to last year, but down 1%, which seeing a negative in front of those numbers obviously is always a good thing. And that, the total criminal code, like I said, is down 1% over last year. And since 2016, overall criminal code with everything is down 24%. And so just one other thing that I kind of alluded to earlier when I was talking about COVID. And another area that is maybe, I shouldn't say maybe, is, is of a concern would be an increase in Mental Health Act complaints. And in the city of Spruce Grove, it's up 22% year to date. And so over, over this time last year, and as I'm sure that you can all well imagine, with the number of things that have been going on this year between, between COVID probably being the biggest one. We have seen, we have been to a lot of families that we've had interaction with that we typically wouldn't have had interaction in the past. And not to say that these resulted in criminal charges, but it did require or at least cause someone to be concerned enough to call the, call the police and have us show up to resolve a situation. So. So um I think that uh COVID uh and, and everything going on this year has been particularly stressful for everyone and our uh mental health uh statistics certainly do reflect that. Uh, pending any questions from council, that's my presentation. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much, uh you know, for the report inspector and um I just uh I'll open up to my colleagues on city council if they have any questions or comments and I'll start with councillor Ackerman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Inspector Holken for your presentation. I agree with you, seeing negatives in front of numbers is a good trend to, to be on, but I have a couple of questions, just more for information. Uh, the first would be, what does cannabis enforcement entail? I see we have seven, it's a two hundred fifty percent increase, but what is that? Is that charges now that it's legal? Trying to understand.
Right, and, and that's, that's the, the confusing part about these statistics is when you look at them and you look at two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. Um, because of the new cannabis act that came into effect, these numbers are going to be really uh skewed or hard to in- interpret at this point. Because uh I don't want to say that they don't mean anything at this point, but compared to other years, it's, it's really tough to say. But uh um but cannabis enforcement would be under the, the, the Drug Act that the, the members are enforcing. And uh I expect in the years to come that we'll probably get a better barometer of where things are going with that. Uh, we recently did have a changeover in the drug unit of uh most of our guys. Because the um, as I've said before, uh our detachment is what we refer to as the farm team for uh a lot of the units in the city. And so because they get such good experience in our detachment, a lot of times they're poached to go and work in those units. And so we have lost uh all of the members of the drug unit and it's a, it's a new crew. Not to say that they're inexperienced because they do have uh a wealth of experience in the areas that they came from. One came from federal policing and another one came from Saskatchewan where he had a lot of experience working in uh joint forces as, as well. Um, before spending a short time in general duty and then uh and then going on to uh our drug unit. So we do have uh, I, I'm happy to say we've got some goo- great experience and some very professional members in our drug unit. And uh I expect to see some very good work out of them. So uh as far as the, I know that that didn't really answer your question too much. But uh what I'll try and do is uh maybe in the future, uh we could even have some kind of a presentation to council on the drug unit and what they do, if that's of interest to the council.
Yeah, absolutely.
Excellent, thank you. Another couple of questions. You answered a few and I just had highlighted the robbery and theft of motor vehicles. But I think you answered that with the prolific offender that did the, the majority of the motor vehicle thefts. Uh, but the robbery seemed to be creeping up as well. Is that the same relative situation where it's someone that you know about that's causing a lot of these incidents, incidences, or is this something else?
Well, and, and robberies are uh a little bit tougher than the, than the thefts of motor vehicle. And, and the reason I say that is because the thefts of motor vehicle are typically uh people that have some kind of a tie to our area that uh it's, it's a theft of opportunity, uh the theft of uh motor vehicles typically, not all the time, but typically it's keys left in. It's uh, it's uh, you know, they want to ride home or they want uh, they want the, the two actually go hand in hand because they want a stolen vehicle to go and perform the robberies. And so um we, we have definitely seen an increase in robberies and some of those are at the at liquor stores, at cannabis shops, at convenience stores, at different areas. And sometimes there's a mix uh of people who are local from our communities and then people that are coming from Edmonton as well. Okay, but we have, we have had some good success uh in terms of uh uh video surveillance. The quality of video surveillance is uh is going up. And I know that uh our analyst has uh uh regular meetings with other analysts throughout the area and with the city of Edmonton. Uh, because these criminals do travel around, uh sometimes they are recognized uh in other areas and that leads to an arrest in our area as well. So we've had some good success in apprehending some of these people as well. And uh it just comes down to uh going in and out of jail and uh happening to be out of jail. And then that causes numbers to rise and uh it's back and forth, yeah.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate the explanation. I have a question on, you have a line in there for municipal bylaw traffic. There's a huge decrease. Is there, is there a reasoning behind the big change of, of numbers?
You know what? I'll have to get back to you on that one and see what's the specific reason is for that. And if it's uh, sometimes it's a matter of, a- and I'm not saying that's the case this time, but sometimes it's a matter of what we call scoring and how the files are, are scored. And sometimes direction will come from headquarters and telling us uh on how to score a file or that they want it scored differently, or perhaps we were not doing it correctly for several years. And then they've came back and said, so I, I'd have to look into the reasoning behind that. But I'll uh, what I'll do is uh I'll, I'll make a note and uh I'll send a message to Mr. Willaski who can disperse it to you guys.
Fantastic. Uh, another question, I didn't know what Form ten MHA reported was.
Hmm, that's uh when uh when somebody is going to be harmed to themselves or others, the peace officers, police officers have the authority to uh put them on a Form ten to take them before a physician or a, or a qualified practitioner to have a mental assessment done.
Okay, gotcha. I just didn't know what that was. I saw a big number of increase, so thought I'd better ask.
Yeah, that goes hand in hand with the mental health, uh mental health component, yeah.
No, I appreciate all your answers and, and the stats and the job that you're doing. I do have one question and it's on behalf of residents. It's a sentiment that I'm hearing more and more often in the past year. And it's just a concern that I'm hearing where people are phoning into the RCMP detachment to report either a break-in or a theft or, you know, people hanging out or scaring them. And, and the sense I'm getting back from them is, well, they took my name and told me to send something out, but they aren't going to send out a car or they aren't going to look into it further. So I don't know if there's a disconnect there between what I'm hearing and what you guys are seeing, or if it's a capacity concern.
Right.
But I thought I'd raise it to you.
Sure, and, and this was brought up at a meeting the other night uh with my uh police advisory group from uh, from a, a council member uh who echoed the concerns that you just said. And uh um number one, I'm not sure, because sometimes the face of the organization, the person who answers the call is not necessarily somebody at the local detachment, depending on the number that they call. And I'm not, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, but I'm saying that uh, you know, if it goes to communications uh in Edmonton, uh sometimes they have very limited staff and uh they're, they're working the entire north half of the province. And so they kind of have to purge through stuff very quickly and uh collect some limited information and somebody get back. That said, um uh, we expect obviously that uh the people's concerns are taken seriously and that uh, you know, that they are given the service that they expect. Now, that said, uh because of uh um limited capacity in, in uh terms of uh uh more accountability, uh more paperwork, more administrative uh duties assigned to police officers. Uh, some of uh, some crimes, and I'm not, I'm not saying serious ones, but I am saying some that uh would be reported by someone can now be reported online and you're essentially given a file number. And, and sometimes the, the downside of that is people don't feel like they're given the attention that they deserve. And uh um there, there is kind of two sides to that in, a- and I, I, I do empathize with people in the sense that uh somebody has their garden hose stolen and that can, you know, be the worst thing that's happened to them all year. Um, a- and it obviously is very upsetting to them. It's an invasion of uh their privacy and it's, it's someone came into their yard and took something that belongs to them. It's very upsetting. And I think sometimes the members, uh because they are uh a lot of times going call to call to call to some very, very serious matters. Uh, you know, when they get something like this, um I don't want to say that it's routine because I don't want to dismiss it as not being important, because it is. But uh uh I, I can also understand sometimes how people might be sometimes left with that impression that uh that it, it doesn't matter because I can tell you in, in the scale of things. Um, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't compare to, you know, a very serious assault. But at the same time, our expectation is that the, the public gets the, the service that they deserve. So uh um I would expect that if council gets complaints like that, uh they refer them to Mr. Willaski. We have a great relationship and uh he can forward those concerns. And uh we can have a second set of eyes, look at them, our ops CEO. Uh, typically what happens is I assign it to him, he has a look at it. And uh he uh either uh reassigned it to, back to the member for some follow-up or uh calls the complainant to um explain to them what happened or why things happened. Because a lot of times uh ninety-five percent of our issue is communication. And sometimes if we don't properly take the time to explain to somebody the reason that something was done or not done, uh that's where things go off the rails. But when you take the time to explain it, then I think they uh have a better appreciation of it.
Awesome. And same problem with us, ninety-five percent is communication. No, thank you so much. Um, just one of their comments. And when you're raising your presentation, the new ability for residents to online file a complaint or a concern, it would be great if the city could, or our communication could work in collaboration with that, to get that message out to our residents. That is a new opportunity, put it on our Facebook and social media. That's first I've heard about, about it and I think our residents would appreciate that new opportunity. So anything we can do to help, I think, would be good.
I'll send some information to Mr. Willaski. Thank you.
Awesome.
Hey, thank you very much councillor Ackerman, councillor Roth. Councillor Stevenson, did you have your hand up? Okay, councillor Stevenson, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I ties into what councillor Ackerman was just talking about. But the app, I'm sure that a lot of people in the community, like we were given some advanced notice that an app or some means of getting uh, giving residents the opportunity and the mechanism to uh s- send concerns and complaints to the RCMP would be coming, but I'm sure that a lot of people in the community don't know about that. So number one, I think there should be some, and it's not our job to tell you what to do, but I think it would be for everyone's benefit if we get the word out in the community that this app exists and where people can get it, what's it called, and how people can use it uh so that we can give uh another opportunity for people to register complaints with the RCMP. So, and the second thing is um the increase in domestic uh spousal abuse and so on. In one sense, it's not surprising because when you have people who have lost jobs, there's a resulting loss of income. People, and there's less of that now because a lot of people are back at work, however, not always outside of the home. But when you're confined to your home with, with spouse and three children and tempers can get short. So I'm wondering what a typical, what happens when you get a call like that and you've got one partner in the relationship who is abusive and the attending officer or officers know that the person is abusive, how do they handle that?
Well, a- and that's uh, i- it's a difficult question to answer in the sense of uh, there can be so many uh nuances to that call is it might uh dictate the direction that it goes. But uh obviously, the, the complainant or the victim's uh safety is, is of paramount importance. And that's why, like I said, we did not collapse the domestic violence unit. Uh, when we did collapse the other units to go back and work on the watch because uh what the domestic violence use does is uh uh provides an extra level of oversight to make sure that our investigations are done properly and then also provide uh extra assistance to domestic violence uh victims and make sure that uh, that they're uh taken care of throughout the process, as does the victim services uh component with that as well. Now that said, uh i- in response to your question, uh you know, members would go to a call. Uh, they would typically separate the parties, uh speak to them separately, give them an opportunity to each tell their side of the story. Depending on uh uh their version of events and what happened, uh physical evidence at the scene, potential for injuries, uh other witnesses, neighbors, children, uh things like that. Uh, they usually can come to some sort of conclusion or a pretty good idea of what happened. And so if it's determined to be non-criminal in nature, uh and, and depending on their response when the police go, if it's uh an, an, an argument that got heated and uh, you know, they quickly realize that and things calm down, then you know, there is a possibility that uh the police would leave and there would be no further interaction. Now, uh sometimes it's a case of where uh at the consent of the parties, uh one of them would go and stay at somebody else's place for the night until uh cooler heads prevail. And sometimes if uh, if there was a criminal uh offense committed, then uh we would be arresting the, the person who allegedly committed that offense and taking them to the detachment, processing them. And depending on uh a number of things, the level of violence that was used, uh uh what they have to say in terms of uh, you know, recidivism, uh their likelihood to go to court, if they're on current conditions, if uh they've been drinking or are intoxicated, uh previous offenses, a, a number of issues, it'll be uh a determination will be made on whether or not they're released on conditions or they're taken before uh a justice for the peace, who would determine whether or not they're released uh or whether they would remain in custody until their court date. So you know, there's a number of uh, of, of different options available to us and each case is uh is completely different.
Okay, and one, just to follow up to that, you didn't mention a potential referral to FCSS, for example. Uh, you did mention victim services. So I imagine in certain cases, there would be a referral to FCSS or victim services?
Right, and uh, yeah, sorry, I, I forgot to mention and uh we do have a social worker that does work with us as well with, in our domestic violence unit. And so um i- they are given a number of options and a number of services that are available in the community. Um, something else that uh, a- and I know it's not in relation to your question, but it just popped into my head, is something unique that we have noticed. Uh, because I uh, I, I went in today before the meeting, uh but they were already, they were tied up on, on something else and they were uh out of the office because I wanted to ask them uh if there was any information that I could pass on to you folks uh about uh trends or things that were going on. But the last time that I talked to them, a couple of weeks ago, one of the things that they noticed was uh that uh there's a lot more female offenders uh since COVID happened. Uh, and when I say offenders, people in the charge category. And uh typically um they have a ledger of their files and uh because they do uh check in and they do follow up and, and that kind of thing. And on a page, it used to be quite unique to have a person uh like a, a female on that list. And now sometimes they're seeing five or six on that page. And so definitely, uh I, I mean, you can look at a number of reasons as to why this happened, but the biggest thing that's changed this year obviously is the pandemic. Uh, people being out of work, people being at home that normally don't spend as much time together as they usually do. Um, tempers, uh tempers for larynx and sometimes uh uh it resulting into uh physical violence.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much councillor Roth, uh councillor Stevenson.
Great, thank you and thank you for being here, Inspector Locken. Um, just it, it really is basically building on what uh my fellow councillors have already spoken to. But uh I know it seems that there is an increase in concerns and uh questions about stunting and speeding, like people uh using Grove Drive or Pioneer or Calahou as like racing strips essentially. And I guess a lot of the frustration with residents is by the time you phone somebody, that person is obviously very long gone, but it seems to be uh an ongoing concern. So how, what's the best way if they, night after night, it, it's usually at night as well, obviously. How, like, are they supposed to record a date and time? How, how can they go about letting the RCMP know that there is a consistent problem? Not just with noise, but obviously it's a safety concern as well.
Hmm, and uh I, I mean, i- i- if somebody witnesses a specific incident uh that uh we're able to lay a charge on, depending on their comfort level of being a witness in court, we can obviously uh take a statement from them and lay a charge based on what they've seen. And uh, but I know that some people are reluctant to do that because even though it is a huge concern, they don't want to put themselves in the position of uh, of being the person that told on this person and uh, and, and having their face in court and known to people that they were the one that called. I, I understand that. Um, what is common and what we do encourage people to do is uh, you know, almost daily to, we get calls from people who will speak to uh a specific member uh and this member will send an email out to the entire detachment and say, when you're doing your patrols, concentrate on this area of uh, you know, Grove Drive by the high school. Um, it, around eight PM, there seems to be a lot of uh street racing and it's going on almost every night. And so if it's a recurring thing that goes over and over and over, uh those emails uh do get sent out and members do pay attention and they do focus their efforts on those areas like uh, um, you know, sometimes there are uh cases where the members do have time to patrol and they go out to uh uh specific areas. And, and I mean, there's the old adage that random patrols bring random results. But the more information that we have from people who tell us where the problem areas are, combined with the information that's provided to us by our analysts, uh we're able to focus our, our efforts on certain areas. And so uh I would suggest that we'd either curb the activity, uh certainly in that area. Uh, hopefully it doesn't just displace it to another, but uh it, you know, i- it, it might uh, it might teach people uh to move out. But I would encourage people to it might teach people, uh, to move out, but I would encourage people to call in because those emails are sent out to everyone.
Okay, so the, the mechanism is to call the non-emergency line then, or is there an email that they, oh, sorry, Mr. Walansky obviously has something to say.
Walansky, go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this particular issue, um, you know, I know that the, the RCMP and even our enforcement services are really busy. I would say that the best thing would be the RCMP prioritize more on the criminal things. Um, for this particular issue, I, I believe that the best course of action would be to call enforcement services. Because they do track the number of complaints, the locations, the times, and then they do prioritize that. Prioritize their efforts and go to some of those locations at those times, based on the number of complaints for that particular issue, so they do proactive and reactive when it comes to that, those speeding and stunting and loud noise, uh, periods of time. So that would be what I would suggest would be the best course of action to, on that particular issue, not that the RCMP can't when it comes up, but i- it's more on the proactive side and doing a record of all those calls. And tabulating them and prioritizing efforts, enforcement services would be the best.
Okay, and I'm sure that's the clarification people are looking for, they understand they don't want to necessarily tie up police resources because somebody is speeding and, you know, every night, you know, doing a racing, but I guess for me is the question, or the question is, is enforcement services on twenty-four seven? Right, be, so let's say, you know, people are racing at eleven-thirty at night, can enforcement services answer that call? Or at some point, does it become an RCMP issue? Or do we just say, work with enforcement services and either enforcement or the RCMP will respond depending on the times, so I, I guess we're just looking for that one place that we can send them to, and then what happens behind the scenes, happens behind the scenes.
So, uh, Mr. Mayor, through to Counselor Stevenson, so, um, they're, they're not always, um, twenty-four hours, but we certainly do um, targeted work, and so again, but the, but the complaint line is twenty-four seven. So, even if they can't respond, and as Inspector Locken said, it's very difficult to go there right after the fact that it's happened to be, regardless of whether it's RCMP or, or enforcement. But again, that helps them track if those, it's eleven-thirty, and this location is a consistent concern. Even if they can't respond at eleven-thirty, well, they can do targeted work after hours in different times, so I would still say enforcement services would be the best, um, place to call, because they, they do receive those twenty-four seven.
Okay. We're all on the same page here, Inspector?
Yes.
Good, okay, great, uh, just want to make sure that, and, um, I guess my second question is, you know, we have seen an increase in, um, domestic violence, uh, and we've got some high-profile cases unfortunately with, um, sexual assaults and interference and stuff like that, I know that the EPS has released a new, um, way to report sexual assault online. And that encourages those that need to, you know, report and are survivors of this to be able to, uh, actually report the assault. Is that something that we could consider here, or the RCMP has considered, just to make it that much easier for someone to report, uh, a, a sexual assault?
Hmm, and I, I completely agree with you, is that it's such a sensitive topic that, uh, people are often afraid or reluctant, especially to come to the front counter and report something like that. Um, unfortunately, being part of such a large organization where change does take longer to put into effect than, uh, an organization like Edmonton Police Service. Um, something like online reporting for something very serious like sexual assault, uh, is something that, uh, is to my knowledge, not, uh, not on the horizon, we just went to online reporting for, uh, less serious crimes, so uh, not to say that it's not going to happen in the future, but, uh, I guess I'd like to send the message out that if somebody is concerned about uh, you know, confidentiality and, uh, um, being embarrassed about coming into the police station to report something like that. Uh, I would encourage them to call ahead, just, uh, they don't have to go into detail about what happened. They'll probably be asked if they're in immediate danger, obviously, to make sure that the offense is not going on at that point. But, uh, I would suggest that they could just say that, uh, you know, they're, they're the victim or they know a victim of a sexual assault. That they would like to speak to an officer and that, uh, you know, somebody would be able to call them back, and that has happened, uh, even in, in the last week where we've had people, uh, call to report something like that, and then we've had an officer call them back and, uh, they don't, uh, they, they can arrange a more, uh, I don't know if I call it a street meeting, but, uh, something that doesn't attract attention to, uh, to the incident or to, to anybody, or obviously, uh, sometimes offenders are close to home and, uh, they don't want people to know that they're reporting these things to the police, so there are avenues, uh, a- a- and which leads me to, and I'm going down a bit of a wormhole here, but it obviously leads to another concern that, uh, people have that we share, that, uh, um, with, uh, you know, when schools were closed and when people were confined in their houses. There are some people who are victims of either domestic violence, sexual abuse, who don't have that out of getting out of the house, uh, and
Yeah.
not just being able to report, but, uh, uh, having that, uh, that break from, from that person. And so, uh, uh, I, I, I guess, I would encourage people to check on your friends, check on your, your loved ones, um, um, just to make sure that everything's going well in their life. And not just about something as, as serious as that, but just their own, uh, mental well-being at this time too.
Absolutely, well, thank you for answering my questions, those are all I have this evening.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much, Counselor Stevenson, Counselor Oldham.
Thank you, Mayor, through you to the inspector, I just want to start by thanking you for all the work you do with the Community Policing, uh, Committee that you and I are both on. Uh, I think that committee has great value to all the stakeholders involved, you're always very open to hearing feedback. We have representatives, just so everyone knows, from Onaway, from, uh, County Parkland, from, uh, Stony Plains, Spruce Grove. From the high schools, uh, representing school divisions, and it's a really great place to bring concerns and information together. And, uh, you manage that group and work with that group incredibly well, and, uh, you can also tell through the conversations in that group, uh, how how well you work with your team at, uh, at, at, at the office, and, uh, I really thank you for, for the work you're doing. One, lots of great questions tonight by my colleagues, one question that I have, uh, that hasn't been asked yet. Uh, you just referenced in your presentation today, I think you will use the word significant or a word like that, in terms of cost savings to the city potentially this year because of, you know, reductions or changes in staffing. Uh, just curious how that gets realized for the city, is that, is there a transfer of money back to the city, is it a credit? So there's a less expense for twenty-twenty-one, as we move into budget and making decisions, I'm just curious how that plays out. And I don't know if that's for you or Mr. Walansky, but whoever wants to take a stab at that, welcome to the answer.
And, uh, uh, I can maybe talk a little bit about it from my side, but Mr. Walansky is probably in a much better position to answer the question on, on the actual process, but my understanding, uh, is that, uh, you, the, the city would receive a bill from the RCMP. Not just for the substantive positions, uh, that they hold with the RCMP, but also the over, overtime claims that have been submitted throughout that quarter, and, uh, uh, the overtime claims is, uh, what I was referring to, and so, um, i- i- it's not something that we can sustain in not having our plainclothes units, but by having them working the watches, uh, we were able to maintain the minimum number of, of staffing required, just for officer safety and public service. Uh, we have a minimum number, uh, complement on each watch, and so, uh, with collapsing the plainclothes units, we were able to realize those, those minimum numbers, uh, and so there were, uh, much fewer claims for overtime, which, uh, when the city would receive their bill from the RCMP, I would expect, uh, it would be less than it typically would be. Uh, like I said, Mr. Walansky could probably answer that better than I could.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Walansky.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to Counselor Oldham, uh, yeah, we, that we don't prepay our contracts, so it's billed on actuals. So we get quarterly bills, and so if there is any, nothing there, it would just be reflected in the actuals, which would then add to our end-of-year surplus deficit, whatever.
Okay, great, thank you for that clarification, and that's all I have, thanks again for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, any other questions, uh, or comments from council, don't see any. I just, uh, thank you very much, Inspector, for the report each year, and, um, you know, while we would like to, uh, you know, see, uh, you know, further significant increases in crime and, and such in our city, we know that your staff are, are working hard, uh, you know, behind the scenes to, uh, you know, to mitigate that. Uh, one of the things, uh, that I could say, since we've seen the new detachment in Spruce Grove, I've seen a significant increase in police presence in the community, I see a lot more, uh, patrol cars, uh, driving through our city and inner city, which is good. Um, and I'm, wanna just, uh, reach out in regards to, uh, and I know that a lot of the, my colleagues have asked different questions on, on domestic violence and and, uh, those other cut types of things, but in regards to what is, uh, you, you would say was done by more prolific offenders, where there's one or two or three people that are creating these, these crimes, do we, we see um, a large increase in auto thefts in our community and, and break and enter, so, um, would you say that the, uh, the causes of these, uh, are still people not locking up properly, leaving cars, uh, unlocked as well as leaving keys and in their vehicles running? Or, or what's the main reason for a thirty-seven percent increase in auto thefts?
That would be the main reason. And, uh, um, sorry, I was just getting a bunch of feedback, but it's good now, um, that would be the main reason, eh, uh, for, uh, for that would be people leaving their keys, uh, a lot of times it's a crime of opportunity. Sometimes people, uh, are legitimate, uh, victims in the sense that, uh, you know, this item was stolen and they did almost everything that they could, that said, uh, typically, it's a, it's a crime of opportunity, and, uh, if you have um, you know, ten neighbors who have their keys locked up in their house and, uh, their doors locked on their vehicle, and there's one vehicle with the keys in it, uh, or in, uh, in the armrest, and the doors are unlocked. I'm willing to bet a paycheck on which one gets stolen, and, uh, so, um, although the numbers are somewhat concerning in that, uh, like you pointed out, a thirty-seven percent increase of, uh, theft of motor vehicles. Overall, I think our public campaigns with Lock it or Lose It, uh, with the community peace officers and the, and the communications, uh, that we've done with the city, in terms of people taking extra care to lock down their valuables. If you look at this year, it's a bad number, but if you look at the numbers from, uh, the percentage change from two thousand sixteen, theft of motor vehicle is down forty-six percent, so that's a significant number that we're down, so if, uh, if we look at a trend over a long period of time, we are doing a lot better than we were. Uh, obviously, we're not there yet, we would like to see no thefts, but, uh, i- in, in a utopian world, but, uh, but we are getting better and we will continue to encourage people, and I, and, and I expect with the cold weather coming would be, uh, a good time. Uh, probably first to advertise people, uh, about our online reporting, and then after we're done that, uh, with the cold weather coming, reminder to people to lock up your vehicle, don't leave it running, warming up in your driveway. If you are, uh, if you, you know, have to run it in your driveway to warm it up, we would suggest getting, uh, anti-theft devices or uh, a remote start, those, uh, those things that would, uh, minimize the chance of getting it stolen.
One of the other comments that I get, uh, and, uh, you know, we're often criticized about, uh, our photo radar program and you'll notice in the city of Spruce Grove, there are a number of new, uh, intersections that are going to be monitored through auto, automated traffic enforcement. And, uh, conversation even, uh, particularly even had, Mr. Walansky and I were standing there on the weekend, uh, and one individual was telling me that it was way, would be way better for people to get, uh, you know, a uniformed officer, giving them a ticket, and that would be a lot more of a deterrent, and, uh, we talked a little bit about that after, about the points and, and that kind of thing, but you know, I was happy to hear about your, uh, your integrated program where you had, uh, you know, you spent a lot of time, uh, you know, on on the highways and within the community on, on enforcement and stuff like that, appreciate that, not to say that uh, I know that you have a lot higher priorities sometimes in traffic, but we're happy to see some of that traffic enforcement and seeing the RCMP pulling cars over on, on, on the intersections and stuff. And you know that as a city, we do like, uh, we do like to see, uh, you know, the, uh, check stops occasionally with, uh, you know, a big check stop program every once in a while, and haven't seen that for a little, little while. Uh, next question I had, or the, and the final question, comment, um, are, are you, uh, are your resources okay as far as uh, do you need additional resources to, uh, target some, uh, crime in, in different parts of the city right now? I know that we provided, I think, thirty thousand dollars this year for you, do you, uh, you know, additional policing? Uh, do you need some more resources, or, or how, how do you feel, uh, as with the workload that you currently have?
Hmm, and, uh, um, as I always say, I, I, I kind of jokingly say, like, if you want to give us uh, ten police officers tomorrow, we'll take them and we'll put them to good use, uh, that said, realistically speaking, um, uh, like us, we've talked about before, the police to population ratio, plus the, plus the workload, we are a bit below average with the police to population ratio. And we do have, uh, probably twice the file count of, of other people. Uh, that said, um, the enhanced policing is a great initiative, uh, because although, uh, you know, the, the requirement of a, of a city, particularly the size of Spruce Grove that is growing, there is a necessity to keep adding resources to the municipal complement, uh, of the, the regular members that, uh, that regularly are, are stationed here or posted here. That said, um, when you provide money to enhance policing, um, that takes away, uh, like, if, if you put X number of dollars towards one regular member, or you put the same amount towards, um, enhanced policing. Um, although there is a necessity to bring up, uh, like, like I said, keep your complement of members reflective of your population. I would suggest that, uh, the enhanced policing is, is a great solution as well, because you don't, you're not paying for vacation, you're not paying for training, you're not paying for sick time, you're not paying for days off. Uh, those kind of things, uh, you are paying for a police officer to be working, uh, on their day off, and they are solely dedicated to some type of, uh, activity in the city on the street, not sitting in the office catching up on paperwork, not, uh, um, you know, not working, uh, in Parkland County, uh, they are assigned to the city of Spruce Grove and, uh, between a discussion with Mr. Walansky on, uh, what the concerns of the, of the city are. Uh, combined with public feedback received through Mr. Walansky or through our own channels and our analysts, uh, we do focus those activities in certain areas, so there is a definite advantage to both.
Okay, okay, thanks very much, uh, for the presentation, and on behalf of all of us at the city of Spruce Grove. Um, you know, we appreciate the work you're doing and we're, we're happy that you're able to do that in your, uh, in your new facility and social distancing because of, you know, what we provided as a region. And, uh, we wanted to wish you well, you and your team, and, and continue to, uh, know that we're here to support. And if there's additional things that we need or that you need from us, feel free to reach out and let us know. And on behalf of our city council, thanks again for the report, and I'll ask one of my colleagues on council to make a motion to accept for information and report. Counselor Oldham, go ahead.
I'll move the RCMP report, we receive his information.
Okay, thank you very much, and, uh, pass on your best wishes to your team, uh, inspector, and, uh, let them know that we appreciate the work they're doing and, and, uh, tell them to keep working and, and keep the, uh, keep the file counts down, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone, moving forward, um, let's go on to three A.
We have order, Mr. Mayor, can you please note on that motion?
Uh, Counselor Roth was just gonna remind me of that, and, uh, with that, I'll call the question on the motion. Thanks very much. Appreciate everybody keeps me on track, thanks. Okay, moving forward, um, we're going on to our, uh, bylaws under three A. Development fees and fines by law, Mrs. Armstrong, this is, uh, your area, so go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council, um, we're getting a bit of feedback unfortunately, so hopefully it's not too bad, let me know. Um, so this evening, we're bringing back the development fees and fines by law for a conversation. Uh, you may recall at the last council meeting, we brought forward the bylaw for first and second reading. And, um, there was a number of questions that council had at that time. One of the questions or requests from council was that administration bring forward a copy of the bylaw showing a comparison between the old fees and the new fees, and if I may, Mr. Mayor, I'll share that screen. Uh, Mr. Mayor, are you seeing that screen?
Yes, we are, yeah, thank you.
Awesome, I'm just going to move it over.
If we could blow it, uh, blow it up a little bit, that'd be great.
Is that better?
Little bit better.
I can probably try to grow it up more. How's that?
Ms. Armstrong, we are now seeing our agenda quick program right now. We were seeing a PDF earlier, but now we are seeing agenda quick.
There we go. That's better.
How's that one?
Agenda quick again.
Okay. Here we go. Oh, I am working with two screens, Mr. Mayor, and so my, the screen sharing is on the screen that I am not looking at, so I apologize. Now it makes sense. Thank you very much. All right, so I have an up for council. The comparison between the old bylaw and the proposed new bylaw. And certainly, Mr. Mayor, I'd be pleased to discuss any of the specific areas that council would like to discuss.
Okay, thank you very much. I know Ms. Armstrong, when I went through the you know, I don't know that we want to scroll through each one individually unless members of council want to talk, you know, particularly about, you know, development agreements and such. But the the new ones or the red ones, the dark black numbers were the old were the old fees and the red ones were the new fees as requested. Now, recognizing as part of our strategic plan, our council and administration talked at our strategic retreat regarding the development or change of of fees that would be more in line with a cost recovery. And I guess on on first blush, when I looked at some of the changes and some of the increases to the new fees, I was taken aback a bit because you know, of the, some of them were significant. And when you looked at, I know we only have one one item here in front of us, but there are a number of items that were had significant increases to it and and the impact to the builders and homeowners. I know that we all received a letter from UDI as well as from the Canadian Home Builders Association reflecting, you know, the tough economic times we're in, so I'll open up to my colleagues on council for any questions or comments. But my initial comments are, you know, are that, you know, the fees are you know, you've obviously done a lot of work on them at the request of council and our direction. And at the same token, we have to determine, you know, if this is a time to start implementing these or blending a manner which way we go. So with that, does anybody on council have any questions or comments? I'll just have to change my screen here a little bit so I can see everybody. Any questions or comments from council in regards to those fees? Counselor Stevenson, go ahead.
I'm not gonna change my tune from how I've been speaking before about this, but there's a couple of things. One, I think it's a really bad year with COVID and the timing, just what everyone's going through to be changing any fees right now. I understand the concept of what we're trying to accomplish, which is trying to make it so that new development is paying for new development. Totally understand that. However, I question the timing of it. And I have a problem, like we know that builders and developers are facing many, many obstacles, not just COVID, but what has happened with the layoffs they have, the lumber shortage. There's lots of things that they're facing right now that I just can't imagine us in some instances doubling the fees on them and expecting us to be really good partners. I just, it doesn't make sense for me, the timing right now. So in terms of that, I I can't support and I don't, I don't know why we're having this conversation now in this year when we need to be really thinking proactively about the recovery of our economy and being partners with our industry that will be the drivers here. So to me, this is a bit of a slap to them, especially when they have told us that they have concerns. That's one of them. I don't know if you want to start there and then I'll bring my other concerns forward.
Okay, thank you very much. You now you had another concern regarding
Yes, so that was for the, you know, for our business and stuff and I know we spoke about, you know, new development, funding new development. But I don't agree that existing development should be completely cost recovery as well. I there's a bit of me that wonders if we're double dipping actually a bit, like you pay taxes in this community to get services and part of those services is when you are dealing with planning and development and I don't know if we should be doing a cost recovery. And I don't know, I brought up the same thing over and over and it seems to go nowhere. So maybe I'm not communicating properly. But to me, there has to be a bit of common sense when it comes to the products or services that people are looking for and the costs we're expecting them to incur in order to do it. And I've given the example of the playgrounds, the swimming pools, the gazebos. We have people that aren't well off, that will buy a fifty dollar pool on Kijiji for fifty bucks. And they are those inflatable pools that, you know, they're fourteen feet around or whatever, about three and four feet high. They will buy them for fifty dollars. Now, it is cost prohibitive to make them do a building permit and a development permit for something that they're using for three months of the year and they paid fifty bucks for. And I saw that we, you know, the permit has now gone up from a hundred and three dollars to two hundred. So we're actually making it even more expensive for people to be compliant. So there's a part of me that says we haven't had a philosophical discussion enough yet. Like I think we started that discussion a while ago, but we haven't had that philosophical discussion to understand what fees are appropriate for existing residents who are paying taxes, who are paying into it. And making sure like that we're not making permit costs so exorbitant that they don't comply. We want compliance. Right? And we we hear that there's a high compliance rate when it comes to like fire permits, for example, because they're free. And it's a safety concern and often with, you know, that's what we do here is it is a safety concern. So for me, I'm I'm having a massive problem getting my head around any of this right now. I think there's a lot more discussion that we still have to have. And we have to speak with our residents as well. Like one thing we did do is we did get an opinion from UDI and the home builders. What we haven't done is had a discussion with our residents on what we think or they think is appropriate in terms of costs that they still have to incur themselves. I think a lot of people will agree when it comes to electrical and plumbing and those types of costs. Yeah, that makes sense, but there's some things that I worry about that we are nickel and diming them. And I think it was counsel Oldham a while ago that said it's death by a thousand cuts type deal and it's the same sort of thing, like you can you can charge for every little thing and I worry about the compliance. So for me, it's a philosophical thing at this point and it's not. I'm just gonna have a really hard time accepting any of this right now. The timing is way off for me. So those are my comments from now on. I'll I'll heat the floor for some other discussion.
Hey, thank you very much, Counselor Stevenson. Counselor Roth.
Thank you, Mayor Houston. I'm going to give a different point of view and I think that we should aim for cost recovery. I'm not going to say that this is the right time or the wrong time. I I don't, I haven't really given that a great deal of thought. However, as a philosophical statement, I believe that these services should be cost recovery, probably full cost recovery. I I think that if I want to build a garage or do some electrical work in my home that I should be expected to go out and get the proper permitting and to pay the cost of that. And I don't understand why this is any different. I don't believe again, as a philosophical statement, that existing residents should pick up part of the cost, should subsidize part of the cost of home builders wanting to build homes in our community for new residents who want to come in. I found it interesting that we went, reached out to the development industry for their opinion and we know what their opinion will do, will be because they're always trying to cut costs and make their businesses more profitable. I get that. But that's like the most biased place we could go, I think, for for those, to seek those kinds of opinions. The point has been made by the development community and the building community that it affects their competitiveness and I don't think that's a significant factor. I think when people consider the community in which they want to live, you know, adding a five hundred dollar or a thousand dollar fee is not going to make a difference. What makes what causes the building community to be struggling right now is I think the state of the operating economy and I don't think that adding five hundred dollars onto development fees is going to have any significant effect at all. And I'm, I think the additional revenue is a little bit of a good thing, but I don't think that it matters that much. I also see this as a way to maybe no, I won't go there, but I just think that this is maybe not the best time. But I'm not sure that there is any bad time to be charging people an appropriate fee for the services that the city provides. So I think we should go, we should aim for full cost recovery. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor Houston.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Roth. Counselor Oldham.
Thanks, Mayor, and you know, some of my comments have already been shared, but I know we're trying to gather a bit of a maybe consensus or an idea here. So I would agree that for new development in new places, when I, we were talking about this previously, for that to be paid for by the people joining the community. I'm okay with that. The timing we'll get to. As Counselor Stevenson and Counselor Roth both pointed out, there's a question maybe around that, but I do agree with that. To Counselor Stevenson's point, I don't think that our, I think our current residents are already members of the club, if you will. And there's some services and some things that you get for being taxpaying citizens and we're talking in my estimation, and I could be wrong, if we're talking about gazebos and decks and pools. From the city's big budget perspective, I think it's probably pretty minimal impact. And like Counselor Stevenson pointed out, we probably want compliance and I almost wonder if it would be a negative impact for sure on the compliance and maybe even therefore on the permitting amounts. If people just all of a sudden say, I got this fifty dollar pool on Kijiji, no way I'm gonna go do it. I'm just gonna throw it in my backyard for three months. Who's probably going to not even notice? So we do want to work on compliance, but we have to be reasonable on our end. And I worry about that. I do have a question for you, Ms. Armstrong. I don't know if you can answer it and it's probably got a lot of parts to it. So I appreciate if you don't have the answer on off the top of your head. Can you estimate what the difference per new house build would be based on these new fees? So we can see all the fees on the one side and the new fees on the other side and some of them are per lot and some of them are for services. Do you get a sense for the average home, what we hear from the home building community is it's gonna increase the prices? Do you get a sense of how much that increase would be per per house?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, no, I haven't done that calculation. But I certainly can do that calculation for the next council meeting. Just to rationalize, did you want us to go kind of all the way back to the subdivision phase to what it would cost to create the lot? And then build the house on the lot? Or are you more concerned with the specific development permit and building permit fees?
I guess what I'm looking for is we would hear from UDI or CMHA or CHBA. You know, this is gonna increase building, you know, the house cost by fifteen thousand dollars and that's a difference maker for families. You're gonna reduce your competitiveness. And I just want the city's perspective on that number. So maybe that gives you, you're the technical person, I'll let you decide what that might have to be, but that's kind of the the impact that I'm looking for. I see Mr. Farbrother with his hand up over there.
Just as a challenge you've got, obviously on the development agreement side, the costs are then divvy up on a it might be fifty lots within a development agreement. So, you know, a five thousand dollar increase divided by fifty lots is a hundred bucks. I think the piece to bear in mind is that UDI and home builders have said your greatest competition right now is West Edmonton. And if West Edmonton is the greatest competition, then it's probably useful to look at the permit and building permit fees that Edmonton is charging. Because obviously, the industry is telling us that that is their greatest competition. And these fees are very, very competitive against the city of Edmonton. Even though UDI and home builders has said West Edmonton is Spruce Grove's greatest competition. You know, because it isn't, you know, in the suburban areas, you know, people either like Laduke or they like Spruce Grove or they like Fort Saskatchewan. But there's probably much more significant reasons why they picked one of those three than the price of, you know, five hundred bucks on a house. That's not gonna be the it's where they work, it's the connections, it's the services that are close by. It's their perceptions of the community, of the physical assets in the community. Those succeed this this conversation by miles. But I would point you to the to the statements, and this is by UDI and home builders that Edmonton is your competition.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Farbrother. It's stated in the package that as efficiencies are realized through CityView and the new software that we have, that a reduction in the development fees may happen after there's an analysis done. What I would want to be careful of is a significant increase in fees and then a fifty percent decrease in those fees or a twenty-five percent decrease in those fees. And then the timing of it really would affect, at the end of the day, the homeowners, because all these fees that were passing on to the developers end up going to the homeowners. So can you comment on what the timeline might be for us to really realize the efficiencies that the new software will provide and how that may impact our fees and would it be worthwhile considering? I don't know if it's an, you can estimate, I know it's an inexact science, but trying to better balance off the next few years, sort of fees aren't doing this and can be a little bit more sustainable anyway.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Mayor. City View will be, the first full year of operation will be twenty twenty-one. And we would need to have that entire year to understand what that looks like. So we probably wouldn't be looking at providing any overall analysis until at least in twenty twenty-two for the twenty twenty-three budget. So in the meantime, we understand that the fees have not been reviewed and there has been no increases in our fees since twenty fifteen. And so we know right now that we're five years behind any increases. Yes, it would have been nice to have had some incremental increases over the last five years, but we don't have that. And so that's why we're looking at, in some cases, a fairly significant jump. So the fees that we're presenting are based on, yes, we're quite far behind. We need to play catch up. And we also are trying to look at what the actual costs are of providing that permit. So we've looked at the amount of effort that is required to deal with each kind of application or each kind of permit. And so these are the fees that we've come to at this point. So recognizing that, yes, we hopefully will achieve some efficiencies and then those would be reflected probably more likely in no increases or limited increases over the next few years. And then maybe if our analysis flashes out, then it might show some decreases in the future.
Thank you. One of the question or one of the potential decisions that we could make is to average out to kind of become again in the middle of the surrounding communities. We recognize that if we put these fees and charges up to the recommended level, we would be on the higher end. But if we were to go to the middle again, if we haven't done any increases in five years, we're probably at the low end. Do you get a sense of where that, and I know you can't give specific numbers, but would that middle be a twenty percent increase or a thirty percent increase if we're gonna aim for that mid midpoint?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. As you'll notice, when we look through the list of the fees and how they vary, it will really vary by the type of application. So I'll go for instance, our land use by law and our area structure plan amendments right now are significantly low. And so we would still be looking at, to bring us to the midpoint, I think probably in the range of a twenty to thirty percent increase. I don't have that number right in front of me at the moment. Where you'll notice that we're recommending no changes to the fees in some of our other areas because they are already at an appropriate level. So it really will depend on the type of fee. So it's pretty hard to make an estimate across the board for all the fee types.
Thank you. Specific question under one point eight and it talks about the process guidance. It says that we will charge a hundred and five dollars at a minimum of two hours for pre-application plans review. Would this include the relatively minor changes to existing residents like decks and hot tubs? I don't think it will, but I need to ask. I don't think it will, but I need to ask because it does refer to bylaws, you know, the heading for this section is bylaws. So i- are those under there, or is this just the bigger developments that we're talking about?
This is the bigger type development. So this is when someone wants to come in and amend an area structure plan, or they want to make an amendment to the land use bylaw, but they don't necessarily want to submit their applications upfront. They wanna get a sense as to what the technical issues might be, what the policy issues might be. So when they pre-submit information, administration still has to go through a process. We still have to spend time reviewing, pulling files, looking at things. So there is still administration's time that's impacted there, and we're hoping to try to recoup some of those, some of those costs. But that would strictly be for the larger planning type applications.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to, to double check. As I know you're looking for a little bit of direction, I would suggest that we've gone five years without doing this. And so part of our moving forward would probably need to be more regular reviews, I would suggest, whether it's every other year or every year. I know it takes a lot of time and energy, and I really appreciate your flexibility as, as we as council navigate this and try and figure out the best course forward. I would be comfortable with that midpoint increase at this point. You know, I, I, we, we did as council talk about, you know, it pays for, developer pays for itself, but given the points my colleagues have made that I agree with in terms of the timing and the significant jump, I think that the higher end is something to work towards over a couple of years. And instead of going from where we are now, which is quite low, to that super high cost in a pandemic year, I would support getting back to those mid-level points, whether that's twenty or thirty percent, and I know that's variable depending on the, on, on the charge. And then putting a plan in place to review regularly and over time work towards those higher fees. I do believe that development should, for the most part, pay for itself. And as this comes to third reading, I would not support the increase for the decks, hot tubs, pools. Again, I think that the residents that already have, are paying taxes and living in Spruce Grove do deserve a bit of a subsidy, and that's what it is. I recognize that. It's a subsidy for those costs, and they pay for our staffing to a certain extent. And so I wouldn't support that. And that's my comments for now. Thank you very much for all your work. I know it's a lot of time and energy, and I'll pass it on to my colleagues.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ackert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to Ms. Armstrong, thank you so much for giving us a comparison today of, you know, what it was and what we're moving to. And I, I will make the statement that I do believe the philosophy of having new development pay the cost that it costs the city and our taxpayers to perform that service needs to be recouped from that activity. But having said that, seeing the big difference, I would probably sway towards Counselor Oldham's comment of kind of working towards full, you know, fully realizing that potential rather than this drastic change. Because I have a couple of questions just about everything, just for a better understanding. And my first question would be, how, how can you explain to us on council how you estimate or understand the effort identified for each of these types of activities? Because when I look at, say, area redevelopment plan, an eighty-seven, hundred and fifty dollar fee, then I looked at, we had a hundred and five dollar an hour charge, so I divided that, that's eighty-three hours of effort. Is that how it's worked out, or is there a whole bunch of other fees you're paying different people? And can you give me a little bit of explanation on how you identify what the cost is? And do you average that out over, you know, fifty of these types of things? And you're gonna have some that are really expensive because they're just complex and they're just a pain. Then you're gonna have ones that just squeak right through, not a lot of effort. Are you averaging those costs of effort, or are we just looking at the max effort?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We definitely are looking at the average effort. And, and certainly some amendments are much more complex, take a lot more time. Some amendments come in very complete, some come in where it takes a lot of different iterations to get there. So we've tried to look at the average effort. And so there is a planner that typically would be on the file, but that doesn't mean that all of the hours are completely attributed to that particular planner. So there are a number of steps that we go through. We have pre-application, information gathering, emails back and forth. When the application comes in, there's typically two, three, maybe four meetings with the applicant. Those meetings typically have more than just the, the planner on file at that meeting. There could be two or three or even four people from the planning department that are at that meeting. There are hours that are attributed to referring that application out within the city, internal referrals, external referrals to agencies, adjacent landowners. There's time reviewing that information. So if a referral is internal, then there is time attributed to other departments within the city, a fire, public works, parks and recreation, and so on. And so what we've tried to do is look at a, what we would consider a typical application and kind of count back, okay, how many hours do we attribute to each of these different functions? We also attribute hours to preparing the RFDs for council. We attribute hours for attending the council meetings, the Cal meetings, and so on. And so we've tried to break it down that way.
Okay, no, and I really appreciate just getting a better understanding of where the numbers get generated and if they're averaged. Now, can you tell me in your research, when you're looking at comparables, is there anyone within our region that are at the full cost recovery model? Are we gonna be the first ones to say, here's based on effort, we're gonna try and capture that cost? Is there someone else that's already doing that? Do you know?
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, I don't know if Edmonton is a full cost recovery, but typically they have the highest fees in the region.
Okay. Because it'd be interesting to know, because I know it's subjective on how we do business and how our operations work and the channels we go. It'd be nice to have a comparator of saying, okay, there's an industry average of a cost for this type of activity that could bring to light, maybe we need to find some red tape reduction or streamlining process, or we're doing more than we, we need to be doing, or we need to be doing it differently, just to find those efficiencies rather than just saying, well, this is how we're doing it, and we're gonna pass the cost off to do it. It'd be nice to know if there was some kind of guidelines or estimation. But since we don't know, we'll have to check with Edmonton. I do wanna know on your comparisons, though, because when we specifically get to the residential permits and adding electrical outlets and gas, you know, you know, stuff that a typical homeowner might be doing during renovations. When I started just grabbing, I was going in fees and charges for St. Albert, for Laduke, even for Edmonton, just looking at some of the numbers, and I don't know when they may have, they may not have updated it since 2015 as well. But I noticed probably we're looking at twice the cost. So I don't know how we're averaging those kind of costs, because when I looked at, I'll give you some instance. St. Albert, when we're looking at adding a deck or an accessory building or hot tub, St. Albert seventy-one dollars, Laduke's thirty-four dollars, and then we're looking for two hundred dollars. So that's a significant change when I'm looking at it. Or even like demolition costs for residential, Laduke's fifty-one or two hundred dollars. I don't know if anyone even gets a permit for the demolition when they bring their bins in, I'm not sure. But even to down to the single outlets, if you got an electrician in to just add an outlet for your hot tub, we're looking now at a hundred and twenty-five dollars for a single outlet. I think Laduke's seventy-two dollars, St. Albert was seventy-one or something that age. So I'm just seeing, we're like a fifty dollar surcharge on a per item thing our residents might be needing to do, which as my colleagues alluded to, I would be concerned where residents just say, I'm not getting the permit. I'm just gonna do it and pull my buddy and he'll put it in, and I'm just gonna figure it out on my own and hope we don't burn down my neighborhood. So I'd really like to see if you've gathered that information, if we can get a comparison or those high lows for some of these, especially on the residential side. And you know, we're talking the large development side, I understand that piece, but I think we need to also pull out those one-offs, because I think I may agree with my colleagues, that some of that, I would believe, is a property service that you're paying through your property taxes. It's part of the machine. There should be some benefits perhaps, and I just would like to see us competitive, because I know people seem to move around the region a lot. They may come here from Laduke or from St. Albert, and we're hopefully, hopefully we're pulling people into our wonderful community. But for those that may have gone through this in other communities, it would be quite the sticker shock when I'm looking at what they're posting on their websites to what we're proposing. So I'd like to just look at those. And if you have any comparable, comparative data. And yeah, I think that's about it. So I think I share some of the same concerns that you've already been raised. I do wanna see us get to that full cost recovery, hopefully that it's the most efficient way we're doing things, and we can find some metrics that we can monitor that. But then on the residential, I think we need to look at, there, there's probably gonna be a subsidy in place for our residents, because regionally, we aren't competitive from what I'm looking at.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think as I've mentioned previously, there are certain municipalities that philosophically have decided to offer subsidy for these types of permit applications. And I think the city of Laduke is, is the most obvious example. Their fees are very low in comparison. And so I believe that their council has decided that all of that city's ratepayers should subsidize development. And that's why their fees are, are what they are. So it is very difficult to do this kind of cost comparable because we are looking at it from a philosophical difference. Certainly, administration is recommending cost recovery. Certainly, as we look at the budget for 2021, we understand that there's going to be some challenges. And so rather than subsidize development, the recommendation going forward is that development pay for development. But certainly, I, I understand that there is some reluctance to have such a significant increase in certain areas. And those increases are, are based directly on the cost of doing business.
All right, and then it gets to the final question, and I need to ask this, is based on if we're gonna charge the cost to do the business, are we gonna also be able to guarantee delivery times of turnaround for, for types of activities? I know it's a common concern that we hear as counselors that, oh, I've come to the city, now I'm waiting three weeks for a callback to get this permit, or no one's getting back to me. You know, I'd like to see us correct some of the performance side with metrics, understanding that we probably need some funding or, or the adequate amount of resources to make sure that that happens. So I'd like to see, you know, we're trying to capture both of those problems at the same time.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. I already believe that the city's planning and development department does a very, very good job with customer service. During COVID, we have a standard twenty-eight day turnaround for new residences. That would include the development permit and the building permit and lot grading approval. We have been running at less than twenty days for the last number of months. That's exceptional to get through all of that. And certainly, you know, it is, it is frustrating to hear that there is some folks that are not pleased with the actions of the department, but I am very, very happy at our customer service level. And, and I always advocate that if someone has a concern, I wish they would contact me as the director directly. And then I can address their question immediately and, and can help them through the process. I don't hear from very many people. I rarely get calls or emails about poor customer service. So from that perspective, we'll continue to the best that we can. And, and then we'll just continue, as I said, continue to do the best we can, and hopefully CityView will help us provide an even higher level of efficiency.
Fantastic, Ms. Armstrong. And, and thank you for the update and clarifying some of the, the concerns I raised. And in the future, if someone has a concern, I will point them directly to you and, and hopefully you can help them out. So I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Gilkey, and then Counselor, Counselor McKenzie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mrs. Armstrong. Just a couple of questions. I don't wanna continue to kick this can. Some of the fees that jump out are, you know, a ten thousand dollar inspection fee on page eight of your presentation. I'm sure that's justifiable, but that seems like a really big number, and that seems like that's difficult to justify as a cost recovery. I am all for cost recovery, again, in the philosophical discussion for new development. I think I echo my col, my colleague's sentiments when we're talking about redevelopment or, or residents wanting to do smaller type projects, because it's very unlikely. I think we wanna aim for compliance as opposed to user fees and, and cost. So I would think I would echo my sentiments there. But back to my inspection fee, what is involved in an inspection that would justify a ten thousand dollar bill?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. These inspections, I believe that you're referring to, are related to the development agreement. So when a developer proposes a new subdivision, then they are required to build a certain amount of infrastructure. Infrastructure would include the construction of new roads, underground storm sewer, et cetera. And so the inspections that are alluded to are engineering's inspections of that new infrastructure. I believe Mr. Levis here came online. Does he have something he'd like to add?
Thank you. Just for perspective, I believe that the fees for development agreements are being misinterpreted. So I believe the existing is ten thousand plus ten thousand for inspection fees. The proposed is five thousand.
Oh, then it is definitely being misinterpreted by myself.
And so, and so the thought process and, and the discussion that we had with UDI was more around, we're going to reduce the initial cost, but we wanna hold them accountable to being ready for the inspection when it's requested. So there's all too many times that because it's included in some of the initial fees, that we may get called, you know, quite frequently, and the developers aren't ready. And when we have a, an inspection done, let's say for undergrounded roads, it's a number of staff members from public works, engineering consultants from the developer that attend these types of meetings. And so they're pretty large events. And so our expectation as an administration is that they're ready for those. And so we were feeling that these fees allow or put back into their court, the development court, you know, the ability to control their costs and the ability to reduce staff time.
Okay, yeah, that is completely my bad. I assumed that the red was the new cost. So my apologies there. I just wanted to say in the discussion of cost recovery, I think we've all said that we agree with the philosophy of it, but maybe we need to have a bigger conversation about what that looks like on the homeowner and resident side, whether we're wanting to supplement that. And I think you're hearing that, that we are, that that's something that we would like to aim for compliance over fee. And I also would be more in favor of a medium range. Kudos to Counselor Ackert for trying to find comparables, because I couldn't, it was very difficult to find comparables. I was trying to do that as well this afternoon, but again, due to our times and due to trying to help development and be the Spruce Grove advantage, I would be more apt to see a, a staggered increase as opposed to a, you know, five-year increase all in one, one shot. Because the last time we did this was in 2015. So those are my comments, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Gilkey, I'm going to go now to Counselor McKenzie.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to administration. Yeah, I just, just for clarity, because I know, Mr. Mayor, you had said at the very beginning of the meeting that the red was the new. I had interpreted it when I was reading it, the red is the old, and then, so thank you for that clarity. So I just wanna make sure, I, I again won't repeat any of the sentiments of my colleagues. I, I do agree, but where I struggle is I do believe in these fees and I do support them. And it's a really tough decision when you're going from two thousand fifty to look forward to, I think we need to be putting in increments. That being said, if we're looking at that, maybe there is an option where, you know, maybe it takes us three years to get up to where we want to be, and maybe that is something that we could look at. What I would like to do, though, Ms. Armstrong, is, is just question a few of the things. The one that I, it really did bother me is looking at 1.2 and the area redevelopment plan. Where, where my struggle is, is looking at the per gross hectare charge. And to me, that's the smaller development then is gonna get hit harder as opposed to the bigger ones, because then it's, you know, you're, so I'm just wondering what the rationale is, because it's quite a, it's quite a leap with the fifty to the two fifty per hectare, you know, as well as going the five thousand to the eighty-seven. So if you can just give me a little bit of background on that.
Certainly, through you, Mr. Mayor. Our philosophy, looking at that, is, is when there is a larger land area that is that is the subject of an amendment, then more work would be involved and therefore the cost should reflect that. When you have a smaller area, then of course, the per hectare charge, although it'd be the same, the number of hectares would be smaller. And therefore, the cost of the amendment would be less.
Okay, so I guess my next question then is if I only have half a hectare, would I only be charged half of the 250?
That is correct.
It is prorated. Okay.
It is prorated.
Okay. And then my other question was on. Let me get to there. On 4.1 in the building. And actually, 4.2, it kind of goes to the electrical and also on the building of the non-residential. Excuse me. Oh, careful. Don't want to cough, right? When we look at the new, it is based on a per square meter charge. Where my question comes into is maybe even just provide me with a definition of installation cost for the electrical and or the job value cost for new for new construction and or additions for the non-residential. And I'll just preface, my question is, if you have a business owner and they want to do some renovations to their business, potentially they may not contract out all of that services. And so they themselves are providing the labor and that sort of thing. So how do you truly determine the job value if that is going on?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding is that a master electrician needs to at least provide the inspection portion of the application. So the master electrician would be the one who would set the installation value.
Okay, so that's for the 4.2 installation cost and that I kind of get and I get that because to me, plumbing and electrical, yes, you are going to be hiring a professional to do that. But then when it comes to the actual additions, alterations, renovations component of that, how do you determine the job value? What is the description of that then?
That is under the non-residential component. And so typically, when there is a commercial or industrial application, there is a professional, whether that's an architect or whether it's the contractor, they have a job value for that. And so it's based on that.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to an example that I have. You have a small business in town and they're literally just moving to internal walls. And and I know speaking with the planning department and are the looking at somebody with the building permits and dealing with that. The I was told that the construction, if it's under $5,000, then there is, you don't need the development permit. But if you're over the 5,000, but it doesn't take much for construction material to get you there. But as far as labor and that sort of thing, if it's just internal walls and stuff, you're not going out and hiring an engineer or that sort of thing for for the, you know, the alterations and renovations. So I'm just, it's just maybe a question, then something maybe that we need to provide a bit more of a clarity of the definition.
Sure, through you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, the applicant has an awareness of what the job is going to cost them. And they will provide that information. And because our building inspectors have a great deal of experience on this, they review the job value as part of their initial application submittal review. And they'll look at it from both perspectives. Is it reasonable for the job? Is it enough? Is it really representative? Or have they completely overestimated what the value is? And and so they would look at it and say, no, no, you're going to end up paying too much for your permit because it's not going to cost you that amount of money. So.
Okay, so I guess I'm, I guess I'm just wondering as to why, though, you look at the residential and we just do a per square meter and why we don't do that for the non-residential. Like, wouldn't it just be easier for just a per square meter cost?
I think through you, Mr. Mayor, because commercial and industrial buildings can be of such a substantial size and can vary so much. You could have just a steel shell building. Or you could have a building that is multiple offices. And so it would be very difficult to provide a reasonable building permit fee when there is such variability in the type of buildings that are submitted in those categories.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And then I guess another question that I had is on Section 6, the business licensing. Just for clarity, it says the annual fee, both for resident businesses and non-resident businesses. And it has the annual fee. From what I had understood is there is no annual fee as long as the business applies within a certain time. So I don't, I don't see that in here for clarity.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that is part of the business license bylaw. This solely just sets the fee. So the the annual fee, if you are a resident, would be 260. However, if you renew within the appropriate timeframe, then you wouldn't have to pay anything. If you do not renew in that appropriate timeframe, that when you came back and said, oh, I forgot to renew, then unfortunately, they would be charged the 260 again.
So that is said in the actual bylaw, not in the fees. So thank you for that.
Yeah.
Okay. And I think that is my, that ends my question. Thank you. And thank you for your hard work on this. This is not an easy task.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that pretty much concludes a lot of the conversation. The one thing that I wanted to ask is in regards to City View. And City Council, myself included, I've heard a lot about City View and how this is going to improve our efficiency, minimize staff time requirements to shuffle papers all over the place because this is going to be handled electronically. And so here we are bringing on City View that's going to increase these efficiencies. And we turn around and we're looking to, in many cases, increase those fees significantly. So I guess I need to know or would like to know on behalf of all of us, what is City View? Is this just for building permits for homes? Is this going to be, is it too complicated to do, for example, to apply for a a development permit or look at an area redevelopment plan? So we're improving efficiency, minimizing staff costs and increasing fees at the same time. So how does City View work and how can maybe explain? If you can explain it all tonight, I would appreciate like a summary of it.
Sure, I'll try to give you a very brief summary right now, Mr. Mayor. City View has the capacity and we're proposing to use it for all application types, right from amendments to municipal development plan right down to building permits, electrical and everything. So all permit types are proposed to be run through City View. So what happens is an applicant wants to submit an application. They will go to our online portal and they will submit their application and all supporting materials through the City View portal. And then as we go through each step of a process, then there's communication through email between the different staff members and the applicant, dependent on which level or which stage of an application is at. So that's a very high level conversation. I could definitely go into a bit more detail at a future briefing.
Okay, so they're going to start the initial, all the initial work and all the initial requirements for all the drawings and such they need that they have to. City View will help them formulate their package to put that all together for you to review.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. Yes, and certainly once an application has been submitted, then it goes directly through to administration to review if all of the necessary documentation for that application type has been submitted.
Okay, that's great. Great to hear. And that's going to improve efficiency and reduce staff time and everything else. But then, once you get that information, then there's the work at hand to start to do those reviews.
That is correct.
I think, I think one of the comments that I'd heard from the the building and development community and the fact that they wanted to make a presentation to council. I know, I know, we know their opinion. I think we've seen their letters. And they, administration said, no, they didn't allow them to do that. And I think at this stage of the game, I think, I think we have a pretty good feel for the development community and the fact that any increase in costs are going to be passed on to the homeowners. And, you know, that we're, we're decreasing our competitive rates. But, you know, when I hear as the mayor and council that we haven't had any fee increases since 2015, I think, you know, I can support some fee increases. And I'm going to kind of align with some of my other colleagues to have us in the mid-range. I don't need to be at the highest range because Edmonton and St. Albert, because I looked into that today as well, this kind of aligns with them quite a bit. And yes, they are a competitor and the market share, I think we've all seen a decrease in in new development in the community and that affects our ability to do things in the future. But I know it's a lot of work and, you know, I think the most important thing for this council is to look at, look at the information closely and see what those fees would be like if we were in the mid-range and bring them up on an incremental basis. And I think I could support that. I can't support this jump right now. Like, I think the very first one that jumped out at me was the 5,087.50 plus $250 per hectare of cost, you know, for area structure plans and stuff like that. And you know, it is a tough time to implement this. But I think if we have some further dialogue on finding them at range, I think, I think as a council, I think we could land on something like that. But I think having this big jump like this, I couldn't support this right at this time. But I could support looking at administration, doing a little bit more work on where a mid-range fee increase would be. So I'll leave it at that. And I know there's.
Mr. Mayor, I think, I think we've had an opportunity to listen to council feedback this evening. There does seem to be a couple of themes that are coming out. One is the objective ultimately to get to a full cost recovery for new, clearly new development. And staging that in would seem to make sense. The second question is, what is the appetite, council, to subsidize, in a sense, the redevelopment or development within existing properties? Or not? And, you know, that's legitimate. So there's, you can break up these fees and charges into those, those those two areas. You know, in viewing these fees in isolation of the rest of the budget, you know, I think we can understand, you know, you're being circumspect with this. I think all that we can say is that over the next 12 to 24 months, you're probably going to be looking at these charges, service levels, etc., you know, throughout the system. Simply as a matter of course. And that is going to lead to some polarization decisions and line of sight around what somebody gets and what somebody pays. City View will improve the back office efficiency of the system. But it won't remove the requirement for somebody to actually inspect that something has been done properly. And so there are elements of the system that City View just cannot replace. And unfortunately, those tend to be some of the more expensive pieces. But what we're trying to do here is align work and activity and what you get for that work and activity. And it's not, it won't be a perfect science to begin with. And, you know, the pools are a good example, you know, the legislation around swimming pools is very, very very, very significant around a permanent swimming pool simply because unfortunately, the loss of life, you know, across the country. And so our system needs to differentiate between that level of requirement to stop three or four year olds climbing over fences or missing fences and bad things happen to the, to kids playing with a small ball in the backyard. So there's, I think there's some things that we can, we can take a look at. But this fees and charges piece is really two pieces. There's one is that there's a there's a true cost of putting a house in the community. And that cost isn't, isn't changing with these fees and charges. It is what it is. It's just who pays. And the second one is then, you know, how do you manage, in a sense, infill redevelopment on existing properties? And I think we can break that out. In terms of the timing, you know, whether it's it's whether it takes 12 months or 24 months or 36 months to get there. The objective is ultimately to get to, you know, if the principal is, should pay, then the objective is to get there. Because then that philosophy will then carry on for the next 20 years. So a year one way or the other is not going to make too much difference. But if you don't start moving in a direction, then you've got 20 years of subsidy before you know it, or you've had five already.
Thank you very much, Mr. Farweather. I think you summed it up eloquently. And I think, I think the, I think there's a sense, as I said, prior to what you said, is yes, I think there's a need for us to move in that direction. But I think we need to do it as some of my colleagues have indicated incrementally that we don't, you know, because of the challenges facing the industries that we do and and, you know, get a better understanding of where the mid-range is. I think, I think we'll be able to land on something, you know, to get it started. So with that, thank you very much for the presentation. And Mrs. Armstrong, we're going to send everybody your number in regards to permits. And thank you very much for getting them out in 20 days. It's, I'm happy to hear that. And kudos to the department if, you know, like, we haven't heard a lot of complaints lately. But, you know, there's always, you know, there's always a few issues that pop up. Who do we get to call when it comes to inspections? I'm talking about electrical inspections and stuff like that. Who, whose number do, who do we give the number to?
With regards to concerns about service or if they are requiring an inspection?
Inspections for electrical inspections, plumbing, electrical, lot grading, etc.
Yep, they just call into the planning department and we have a dedicated person that schedules the inspections. So just the general department number would be perfect.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I don't see any other, other questions or comments in regards to this. And I think, I think we've given some clear direction to administration to, you know, to relook at the fees and charges and come back with a, look at kind of a mid-range and philosophical thing about our community one. So with that, I'll ask for a one of my colleagues on council to accept for information, the business item or the bylaw. Counselor Gilkey or?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll move that the presentation on the proposed C-1124-20 development fees and fines by law be received as information.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll call the question on the motion. Hey, thank you very much. And I'll call a five minute recess for a comfort break. And I will see you right back after that. We'll give you seven minutes because I know some of you have a need a cigarette or whatever. Counselor Roth, go for a smoke. Counselor Roth, go for a smoke. Okay, it looks like we're we're all back. So I'd like to call the meeting back to order. And we're going to move forward with our business items and interesting discussion. We've talked a few years ago about mobile vending strategy. Mr. Olansky's probably been working very hard along with their administration, planning on how that would look. So, Mr. Toll, I guess you're our presenter. So go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, as you alluded to, back in 2015, administration took our first sort of try at welcoming the mobile vending industry into the city's first growth with the development of the food truck policy. That was an administrative policy. That together with some amendments to the land use bylaw has served as our general approach to mobile vending for the last five years. In that time, we we've learned a lot. We've had some feedback from both applicants and proprietors that have successfully and some not so successfully tried to do get involved in mobile vending in the city's first growth. But in addition to the the vendors, we've also had input from various departments, including enforcement services fire services and the planning and development department. The strategy that I'm going to be discussing tonight has been put together to alleviate to try and alleviate some of the concerns that have come internally and externally. One of the big concerns that hopefully we are addressing is timing of getting approval to do mobile vending.
Get you to speak up just a little bit, Mr. Toll. You're very quiet.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for telling me. Is that better?
But that's a lot better.
Okay, I will project more into my microphone. So one of the the main concerns that we're trying to alleviate is the question of timing to get approval to do mobile vending. As it is right now, if you're operating on private property of any kind, you need to get a development permit. And the development permit process, because there is an appeal period in that takes like a minimum of 21 days to get an approval. And that when we get people calling and saying, hey, on the weekend, I want to put my my food truck at wherever. We we just can't approve a development permit in that time period. So that that is one of the big issues that we're trying to alleviate. Enforcement issues. We we've had concerns from enforcement services. One of the big problems was the vendors coming into the city and using their tri municipal business license and thinking that that gave them the permission to operate their their vending unit wherever they wanted to. So we we've moved to correct that. And one of the other concerns that came from the planning department is we're focusing on food trucks. And the the policy was called the food truck policy. But there are other types of mobile vending. We have the Christmas tree sales guy. It's Christmas and the the produce sellers throughout the summer. So what we're looking at, it takes into account all the different types of mobile vending. Right now, I'm going to put up the the flow chart that I prepared to show the process. So let's see if I can do this. Is the flow chart up?
It is.
Okay, thank you. So this is a flow chart of the processes that are involved in mobile vending, the strategy.
If there's a way to expand it, that would be great for those watching. I think I just expanded it myself. I think we got it. Yeah, that's a little bit. There we go. It's a bit better. Yeah. Beauty.
Okay. So there are three different types of mobile vending that we we've identified. And each has a slightly different process. Vending within the road rights of way falls under the traffic bylaw. Vending on private property falls under the land use bylaw. And vending in city parks and open spaces is governed by the parks and open space bylaw. But before I get into those various flows, the the one overarching concern is that of safety and and health requirements. So in order to catch all of these various scenarios, the the strategy is that everyone who wants to do mobile vending of any kind in the city's first growth will have to get a mobile vending business license. And as part of that business license approval process, they will have to confirm that they have all the required health permits and safety permits. And so that if enforcement services or anyone sees someone bending and they have their their business license, they know that they have the required health approvals and safety permits. So once a vendor gets their business license and they want to work within the rights of way of the road rights of way. They would have to apply for a vending permit under the traffic bylaw. And I I know the traffic bylaw is up for review and there's a a new bylaw drafted. This provision works with both the the existing traffic bylaw and the traffic bylaw as proposed. So this wouldn't be waiting for the new 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 bylaw. So the vending permit would have within it conditions of use and enforcement services would know about those conditions of use, like you cannot operate on an arterial roadway. For example. So we would have the rules and regulations within the permit. And the applicant would agree to those and they can go on their way. We we had a successful vending permit issued this summer. I think there was an article in the newspaper about the ice tie-dye ice cream guy. And although the this process hadn't been totally initiated, we did try and follow this this process with that application. And I I believe it went smoothly and enforcement services did not have any problems with that use over the summer. They had no concern. Everything they they heard was positive. So I think that was a good trial run for for that type of vending permit. Then the big change that we're we're talking about is the land use bylaw. And the change is going to occur within the C1, C2, M1 and PS districts. And the mobile vending use is going to be a permitted use. And the will not require a development permit. So right off the top, that'll cut out about three weeks of waiting time for a potential vendor who has a site and has authorization from the owner. They don't have to get involved with the planning and development department to get an additional permit. They just have to get authorization from the landowner and follow the guidelines that would be in the land use bylaw.
Oh, so very simply on that, if if a landlord wanted to have a little party on the weekend and bring in a hot dog vendor, then they can just do that if they get permission.
Within the commercial districts and the industrial districts, yes. If you're, let's say, you, Mr. Mayor, want to do that on your property, you would have to get a development permit. So you would have to have a little bit of forethought and know that you want to do it. And and the the rationale behind that difference is that in the commercial districts, there is commercial activity going on, whereas in a residential district, it is not a common occurrence to have the mobile vendor come about. So we want to give the notification to to neighbors. Okay, so that that was where the two two flow chart, two streams of vending. The third identified type is vending in city parks and open spaces. And we had a a successful change in the summer of 2019. We had gotten together with the recreation department and talked about how to streamline the process. And what we came up with was that parks or that recreation services would apply for development permits ahead of the summer. And then authorize various users who satisfied their conditions or various applicants would give them the parks and recreation would give them authorization to use those locations. Therefore, there was no waiting period. And it was relatively successful in in 2019. 2020 was a very different summer due to obviously the the COVID situation. But what we are proposing going forward with the vending in city parks and open spaces is that it is not permitted unless parks and recreation or recreation services has a development permit for the site. So in the springtime, park recreation will apply to the development department to get the development permit on the chosen locations. And then those sites will be available to qualifying vendors throughout the summer. As I I said, the the big change and the big, I guess, freeing up of time for waiting for approval is on the private property side. And this is what we we've come up with. We've checked with various municipalities around the province. And this is sort of what we came up with to to curb the the waiting period and is in line with a lot of the other municipalities around the province. I think I just want to make comment that for this to come, for this strategy to move forward, there will need to be an amendment to the business license bylaw, the land use bylaw and the development fees and fines bylaw to get all those bylaws sort of talking together and and in line with this process change. With that, I I will end my discussion or commentary and and open it up to any questions or comments with this approach or strategy on mobile vending.
Okay, thank you very much. And we've had, you know, we've had over the years, a number of, you know, vendors and stuff that have reached out to us and I will open up the floor to my colleagues on council for questions of clarity. Counselor Ackerman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for the presentation. It's it's great to hear. We're coming with a strategy that's going to meet some of those concerns. But I have a couple of questions after reading the package. Now, my first one, you mentioned in your presentation a mobile vending business license, but is that to mean the same thing as a standard business license? Or is there going to be a separate tier with a separate pricing? Or is that the $260 the first year? If you renew, it's free? Is it the same business license we're talking about?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the associated amendments, one of the amendments would be to the business license bylaw. And we would be adding a separate license type for mobile vending. And the the fee structure will be probably be a tiered structure where you could apply for And the the fee structure will be probably be a tiered structure where you could apply for two months. You could apply for four months or or the whole year and the the fees would be prorated to a certain degree. Does that answer your question?
Yes, no, it does. I was just thinking, we have the mobile guy on the bicycle this summer, and if they're expected to come up with $260 plus whatever a vending permit might cost. You know, it's it becomes to the point where some of those small entrepreneurs wouldn't be able to afford probably to operate their small business. So I was just concerned about that, but I'm happy to hear that that will come forward. I got another question. When we talk about the vending in the road right away, how currently do we handle the ice cream truck that drives around our city? Is that one not licensed and shouldn't be running around? Or is there, are we doing something different for those that I see driving around every summer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the the we have currently for the 2020 summer, we had the bicycle ice cream vendor. And we recently had the application for the ice cream truck. And I I I don't know if it's the same one that you're seeing driving around, but there there was the two then ice cream vendors, one on a bicycle, one on the truck. So those are the two that are legally been operating. The way that we we did those two was through a license of occupation, which is, I think, another way to say a permit to operate within the road right of way. And there was a fee involved and there also we did require the business license and I I I think there were some. It wasn't the full $260. I I I don't believe there were were some things taken into consideration when when the the fees were accepted for those.
Perfect. Yeah. And and as long as we're continuing to take that in consideration, because there's there's a difference with a, you know, major food truck operator that's running 300 days of the year versus, you know, something that's just going to be sporadic for a little bit of extra cash. But I have a question, would if we looked at that venues within the road right away, would that allow for such opportunities for neighborhood block parties to bring in a food truck? Or for, and I know this has been marketed and I've seen on Facebook, you can order the food truck for your birthday party at your house. Would that be something that these companies would have that permit that they could pull up to the front of my house, sell me a hot dog if I had? Or the the block party itself, would that be sufficient for that type of activity?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's a great question. And we it it's kind of the next phase in the the process. I I think the answer is going to be if they have their business license. And then you apply for a a block party. They would be a qualifying vendor, so they could go to your block party. I I don't want to say that that it like we're working with the the other departments to try and pull all this together, but i- in my mind, the vendor with the, if they have the mobile vending business license, they've shown that they have their health and safety checks completed. And I I think that is where the concern is. And I would suspect that they would get approval to go to the vending to the to the block party.
That's fantastic. No, and it's exciting to have these opportunities. I think as we continue to grow, you know, there's different opportunities and I'm glad we're looking forward to streamlining the process, but I appreciate you looked at all three different bylaws that we have to amend to make this happen. And it's more complex than just saying, let the food trucks go out there. So thank you for the presentation. I appreciate your response.
That's from Mackenzie.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to administration, I guess. I have a few questions, but I'll build on councillor Ackers a little bit, because I did have a question in regards to. You had made a comment that, like especially vending in the city parks and open space that, you know, we would allow a certain amount of vendors, I believe, from what I had understood you saying, where they would, you know, be approved somewhat for within the park spaces. And like with councillor Ackers' question, I know in the past, I we actually had hosted a a birthday party for my mom in the park and we had brought in a food vendor truck, but we'd also brought in the bouncy castle. And I know we went through the city and we dealt with the permitting and that sort of thing. And, you know, because there's liabilities on those sorts of things. So I'm kind of doing a two, two, two type question on this one. Number one is you had said they would be considered a qualified vendor for the parks or for whatever with the city. Do they have to get that pre qualification? Or if I want to bring in a different vendor that's never been in the city, as long as they're showing their proper, you know, food licensing and all those sorts of things, then they potentially could become a a licensed food vendor. And then the second question, it takes you to that bouncy house or we have other businesses. Wh- when I look at this vending is the offer of sale. But what about we have companies that have wanted to do activities in the park with their business licensing? So that then does not fall under this one as far as I can see. So it's kind of a two tiered question there.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The you're you're correct. It is a different thing that you're talking about, like, say, a yoga studio wants to do a class in the park. That's a different type of approval that would fall under the parks and open space by law. I believe in there. I can't remember if it's the existing by law or the new by law. It talks about permits and what types of activities could be permitted at the discretion of the recreation department. And they would have to go through that type of a permitting process to get that type of an approval, I believe. Your other question regarding the food truck at, say, a birthday party in the park. We are, this is very similar to the former question about the block party. We're working with it's kind of the next step is coordinating efforts with the the administrative branch that looks after those types of activities. And I've had some preliminary discussions with 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 them and it it looks like I I think we we all want to make it easier, but we also want to make sure that those vendors have their safety and their health permits. And the way that the mobile vending strategy, if we're calling it that, is laid out. If they get a business license or mobile, mobile vending business license, then we would know that they have their required health and safety permits. In my mind, that would give them the the okay to operate at those functions. But as I said, that policy isn't is, that's kind of the next step in in where we have to go. And administration has to figure things out because there has been some. I don't want to say confusion, but there there have been some vendors that have come in and operated at parties and and block parties and so on and so forth that haven't had all the safety requirements for that are required. And we want to make sure that those are their safety requirements are met. So it's a some coordination of efforts that is going to be required. And hopefully, over the winter, we will get all that, all those ducks in a row. So I I I know I haven't answered your question fully, but it is something that we we have identified as it needs to be straightened out.
Okay. And I and I guess you you kind of segued into when you're you're talking about the different bylaws that need to be amended along with this and moving forward. And I think it's great. And I and I was going to question then, do we not need to then also amend potentially the parks and open space by law? Because when you look at the green section of your flow chart, when you talk about authorization from recreational operations are required, I'm assuming that would be then within that, because I know in the past, like I said, I have done a birthday party. And I did get proper papers with and dealt with the vending truck. So I think potentially we have maybe something in in the works that we've been using for years. I mean, you even think about Canada Day that the city of Spruce Grove themselves sponsors where we have vending trucks there. So we must have some sort of within the parks and open space by law, there must be something. So that was just my question as to, do we potentially also need to make sure that we're, do we need to make changes to that by law?
I just, Mr. Rolanski wanted to weigh in there. So go ahead, David.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to councillor Mackenzie, I can answer both of those questions with a little, with some clarity from from the Canadian Protective Services side, the open space by law is currently scheduled to come to council sometime in October. So that has, as Mr. Tool did mention, it has some changes in terms of some permitting and some things that would be required for all kinds of activities in our parks and open spaces. So that is already coming related to separate from the mobile vending, right? Because those are other activities. And the other question about specifically when they pre approve for things currently, and as Mr. Tool said, we're going to have to just fine tune it, but currently, when someone pre approves, there's a certain amount of vendors that are pre approved for a season in those parks. The challenge currently with allowing just if someone pre approves it then for just a birthday party, that becomes a little bit of a free for all in the parks. And so we have a certain limitation on the number of vendors which are pre approved for a season. Again, we just want to fine tune that, but that's currently the process, because if we just had 20 pre approved at the beginning, they can go in for just a birthday party, whatever, we could be inundated at our parks with mobile mobile vending. So this by law is one part of it, but then also making sure that we have clear parameters around not just having a free for all.
So it's funny you say that because that was one of the questions that I was going to say, if we have pre approved, do those vendors then have that that approval that they could just show up at the splash park every weekend if they wanted to? And not necessarily be there for a birthday party.
Mr. Mayor, through to councillor Mackenzie, that's the current way is that they pre approved, including the location at the park. So they can't just kind of go wherever. So they they pre, as Mr. Tool said, they set aside certain spots and they do a system and they work through that. So just fine tuning that, but that's the current and how we'll mel- mesh it into this new one.
Okay. And and then I guess, and and this is, I'm excited to hear that the parks and open space by law is coming forward. And I guess my other question was, because I've heard often, not just with with this, but with with many things within our planning department and dealing with different things that all of a sudden, I thought I had my approval and then there's an extra condition thrown on. So when I, again, when I read this and I, you know, follow the flow chart down, it often says applicant agrees to the conditions that are provided and requires documentation. And I just want to make sure that, you know, those conditions are thoroughly laid out within all of the different bylaws that they need to be in. So that way we're not hearing from people, oh, well, I thought I had it. And then all of a sudden, last minute, I had another condition pop up that I couldn't meet and then I couldn't get my thing done. So that's that was my biggest concern is just the parks and open space by law. So I'm happy to hear that that's coming forward. And I think yeah, I think that's that's all I, within the path forward, within the wording of of the actual request for decision information package that we gave, they just talk about, you know, have a business license and provide other supporting documentation. So as long as we're just laying out that extra of what is truly required, that's great. I'm I'm looking forward to this moving forward. I think this is great. Thanks for your work on it.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor Mackenzie. Any other questions or comments? Councillor Stevenson.
Great, thank you. So I'm really excited because I complain every single year about that ice cream truck. But I have a question because part of my concern with him is the level of noise that he can blast that music. And it's the same Katy Perry song all the time. And it's so loud that even with your windows shut, you can hear him coming from a great distance. And I do have concerns and I've heard it from a couple of people. With us working at home now, that can be quite disruptive. So I'm wondering about, and you do mention actually in here about noise, but I didn't see anything beyond just the little bullet point saying noise. So what sort of limitations or discussions are we having about? Like, it's one thing for him, but then you could get other people wanting to blast music or, you know, do something that's quite you know, trying to get attention and stuff. So how are we dealing with that type of part of it, I guess?
Thank you for the question through through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just have to look at the the draft bylaws here, but
Sure.
I'm pretty sure that it so on private, let me go back a step here. The the ice cream vendor that you're you're talking about, is he operating on at Jubilee Park or or just roadways?
Set me up for my next question. He does both. He's in the park and then he's on the right of way. So he's in the road as well. So he'll I don't know if he's the one, the ice cream truck that actually had the permit or not, because I've seen two other ice cream trucks this summer I've never seen before. So he, it appears that guy goes everywhere.
Okay. So if the way that it it should work in the in the future is he would need, I say he, they would need the the permit to operate at Jubilee Park through the through the parks and open space by law. And then if they were operating on the roadway, they would need a permit as well through the traffic by law. Now, we don't have a decibel rating in those bylaws, but they both have men- mention of disturbances and noise to I can't put my finger on it, but there is policy that and regulation that says you have to keep noise to a not a minimum, but reasonable level. And I do believe it says that you're not to use amplifying devices. I think we we probably will have to put, if that is a concern, we'll probably have to put a little bit more definition behind that. But it it is something that there, the bylaws speak to that and the permits speak to, or they will speak to that. So enforcement will be able to go and say, hey, policy two of your permit says you have to keep your noise in check. We've had complaints. If you don't turn down your music, we're going to revoke your license or there there are other penalties that could be applied. So I don't, like I said, I don't know if we're going to get into the exact decibel re- ratings, because we probably don't even have the technology to
Yeah.
to go out and check that. But noise is a concern and it is something that enforcement will be able to talk to them about.
Okay. So if they get an open parks permit, is that to operate in any park or is it one light or permit per park?
So the way that it is functioning right now, and I I think we had discussed with recreation that it would go forward this way is recreation chooses how many sites and where at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
So say three in Jubilee Park and and let's say they they opened up one.
Like at Central Park or something?
At Central Park, yeah, in the parking lot there. And so a mobile vendor would come in and request authorization to use those vending sites. And they they aren't given one and they're not given a specific day. They, if they provide all the information that is required, there said, okay, you have authorization to use those sites. It is a first come, first served basis. So if there are ten vendors and they all show up at the same day, there's a problem, but they all know that going in that it's on a first come, first served basis. And that that has been an issue in the past. But apart from opening up countless stalls, I I think that's the the method that is going to be going forward.
Okay. Now, ice cream trucks are one thing. Food trucks, I know in the city of Edmonton, for a while, a a food truck couldn't park at like within a certain distance of a restaurant, because they were taking away from the restaurant's business and they don't pay taxes in there. Are we going to have anything like that? Because, you know, when we mentioned Central Park or even Columbus Park, which is in our city center, do we, are we thinking of any sort of limitations or distances from existing restaurants?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we are. And I believe there are meters, you know, from a an existing, and it is, this goes beyond food trucks. We're also talking about mobile vending. So there could be someone selling T shirts. And do you, if you're a T shirt you have a a store, you'd probably be upset for someone setting up right outside. So yes, there is a minimum distance. I I believe that is within both the development permit development permit or not development permit, the, the Land use bylaw regulations that will be coming forward and also in the permit to the um uh traffic bylaw. And I think there's a clause that it says you have to be X many meters away from an existing business unless you get authorization from that business that they don't mind you being there.
Okay, just two more small questions. And this one will probably tick off a lot of people that are like, shut up. What do we do when it comes to people like selling tabor corn or B C fruit and stuff, right? Like they come and they've got their trucks. And I've seen that they've uh set up on church properties and I don't know if that's a way around it or if we're going to expect the same thing if you're selling tabor corn or, or anything like that.
Yes, um, when I, I started in the beginning and my, my kind of preamble there, that was one of the, the problems that we, we've had is that and it's, it, it's a problem, but it isn't. I mean, we, we want to see the, these, these vendors come, there, there is value to them. Um, but having them set up anywhere i- it can be a problem and not having any regulations is a problem. So the way that um this is set up is that they should get a mobile um vending license, business license. Um, and then if they want to set up on, say, a church parking lot, I believe the church would fall under the P S Public Service District. So they wouldn't need a development permit. They would just need authorization from the owner.
Okay. And that's the same with putting up signs as well? Like, do they get away with putting, like, I, I see them all the time, right? So?
Signage is another issue. It is discussed in the, the draft bylaws, change amendments. Um, but no, they, they can't put signs everywhere.
Okay, and my very, very last
Try to.
Yeah, and they do all the time. Um, so my very last question is, is there any consideration, you know, like the ice cream i- is a great example. You've got Harding who's like pedaling and cannot cover near the distance of what somebody, if they were, had a road wide, right of way, could drive all over the city, make considerable more money. Is there consideration for looking at a different level of fee, for example?
Um, right now in the, the proposed change to the I think that falls under the fees and development fees and fines bylaw. Um, no, it, 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 the way, and we, we can review that before we bring it forward, but right now we're looking at, I think there's a distinction between um a food vendor and a non-food vendor. And then both of those you can have um the, the fee is based on how long you want the perm, the to operate your business. So if you wanted to operate it for the full year, you'd pay the full amount. If you wanted it for two months, it would be prorated.
Right. It'd be great to have like a student rate even. I'd love to see our young entrepreneurs out there attempting things. You know, like he did, he saw great success and it would be great if we had a, a student rate to really encourage that type of initiative in the city. So those are all my comments for now. So thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm wanting just to, you know, the this, this, this example is a fabulous example of the contradictions or challenges uh going on in the province at the moment, which is around uh red tape reduction and the, on the other end of the spectrum, spectrum, you legislate for every, every eventuality. And in order to regulate for every eventuality as it relates, relates to vote mobile vendors, we'll have a five hundred page document. And if we were to do cost recovery, we'd probably have permit fees for a thousand bucks a permit because of the detail required to regulate all the exceptions. Question becomes is what's the objective? If the objective is to activate park space, then you minimize the restrictions. If the objective is to protect local businesses, then you maximize the restrictions. Um, you know, there's the the mobile vendor model in, in Europe today is, is such that major parts of inner, inner suburbs are re, re-engineered or re, redeveloped because that's an economical way to bring economic activity back into a core. So um, at some point, there's a policy, there's a, there's a strategy conversation about what you're trying to achieve. And then we can write the rules about it, but we can't write rules for ev- for every eventuality. Otherwise the rules then stymie everything. Um, you know, motorbikes in the city of Spruce Grove probably generate way more noise than any Dicky D on the ice cream thing. Um, so the principle is, is, is there a level where noise is, is a problem? If that's what it is, then there's a decibel and it doesn't matter who you are, what you are, where you are, you want to exceed that, you pass the bylaw. It's a very simple bylaw, but if we start to try and write rules for everything, you'll, you'll, the frustrations that you, you know, sometimes the development industry expresses is just being magnified. So I, I do think, you know, at some point there's a conversation about what it is that's actually, you know, what's trying to be achieved. Mr. Tool can write hundreds of pages of rules. Um, but he can't, but he, but he, he can't, he can't write rules for every eventuality.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Counselor Oldham?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and uh, thanks, Mr. Tool, for all your work on this. I really do appreciate what I perceive to be the intent of making it easier for the businesses to operate, uh, streamlining process, but making sure that some bases get covered um for the health and wellness of not only the businesses, but our residents in the city. And so I appreciate the intent and uh, the process that we're taking to work towards it. Uh, I did actually contact Harding over the weekend, uh, just to get his perspective on, on his experience uh in, in going through this process. And uh, he, he and his mom both mentioned that staff were great to work with and uh, everyone was friendly and, and genuinely trying to help him. One concern they did have, and if this is the model that we're, we're working forward with, I hope this is just a one-time issue, but I want to clarify, he said there was a hundred and fifty dollar plus tax legal fee for a legal document that he had to pay himself because he was the first one ever, or that, you know, he was a unique situation. Uh, that's troubling and is that something thing that, if he's the model, is that something that this bylaw will rectify or is that something that will be carried forward?
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm not sure where the hundred fifty dollar legal fee came from there. There was a, I, I believe the permit which is, was, was issued as a license of occupation had a fee that went along with it, which was a hundred, I believe it was a hundred and fifty dollars. Um, and what we sent to them uh as, as part of the process was the license of occupation that had outlined where he could operate, under what set of circumstances he could, could operate. And um then the, the fee was a hundred and fifty dollars. So to my knowledge, that was the fee, the hundred fifty dollars was the sort of application and license of occupation fee. Um, if there were additional legal fees that he had to do, I, I'm not aware of those.
The fee that you refer to, I'll, I'll double check with them. Uh, are we working towards one application with one fee? And within that application, and there may be, you know, places or whatever, but one of the challenges that Harding checked me was that he ended up giving up on this Parks and Open Spaces uh opportunity to and be in because it was another form, it was another fee, it was another three weeks. Oh, he appreciable fees and multiple forms to fill out, kind of simplify all of this to have one form, one be done.
You were kind of blocking out there a bit, but I think I got what you were saying and um the, the process, there are three different types of, of vending and to get a permit to operate in the road right of way, you, you need to get a permit through the traffic bylaw. If you want to operate in parks and open space, uh, there is a permit through the Parks and Open Space bylaw. That won't change, but in regard to streamlining it and making it um uh, an easier to follow process, we're, we're, that's kind of one of the next um steps in this is to work with the communications group and, and make sure that people know what they have to do and who to contact if they have questions. And um, this will be a more streamlined process. Yes, unfortunately, if he wants to operate on the roads and in the parks, there is, there are two permits and they would have to apply for, for the two. I, I don't believe that recreation is charging for that, but there are information items that, that are required to do that. And I, I believe when we move forward with this, the application process will prob- probably be one application form. And then if you want, you identify on that form where you want to operate and then it would sort of direct you to those that the information that's required for both types of permits.
Thank you for that. Uh, do we have uh, business license as long as they, as long as they renew on time is a free renewal? Will that be the case with the mobile vending licenses? Uh, one-time fee and if they renew on time, it's just a, a free renewal?
Currently, that is not the thought. Currently, the thought is that most of the vendors are not residents. You get people coming in from, from afar to bring their truck in, do business and then they go home. Um, the idea right now is that if you want to do mobile vending, you need to get the mobile vending license. You can choose how long of a, of a license or authorization you want. Um, a year, six months? I, I forget exactly what the breakdown was and it's prorated, but you would have to get that on an annual basis. And part of the rationale for that is we need to make sure that the safety requirements and the health um certificates are up to date and everything is, is in compliance.
So can you explain to me how that would be differentiated from a restaurant? Uh, that would also have to have all the health certificates and be in compliance with many things. And there's not a charge for that restaurant to get a, a renewed business license?
Um, I, I think one of the, the primary change or differences is that the, the restaurant is a, would be a, a it has a location. Um, they are, I guess, um they, they've shown that they're in the, the community, they're paying their taxes, they're bringing in business and so on and so forth. I'm kind of trying to think off the top of my head. Um, I guess if council desired for us to make it, um you know, a, a one-time fee and you could, we could try and structure it that way, but uh, for the time being, it was thought that this was a different type of business. They, they come into the community, they do offer something. Um, but um, it would not be an automatic renewal. It would be, you have to pay the fee every year.
Fair. And I would just advocate as it moves forward a, a little bit for residents, again, uh, maybe our current taxpayers being given that automatic renewal opportunity. And I'm okay with people that are coming from uh, you know, out of our, our community from the city or whatever to have to go through that process. They're using our city resources and they're not contributors. So if there's a potential to differentiate there, that would be great. Um, I think that was, oh, the last question. Uh, s- food trucks at schools are really popular events for track meets or spirit days or whatever. Uh, as we move forward, I don't need the answer now because I know we're just at the start of a process, but it would be interesting to know how this will apply to school events. Um, and again, you don't even have to answer that now, but that'll be a question I'll have as, as this comes forward again uh, in future meetings. So I really appreciate your work on this. I think it's, uh, again, uh, your intent is is great and I look forward to being part of the process to try and get this right for our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Counsel Oldham, Counsel Grilke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One quick question, Mr. Tool. In the article, it actually says, yes, to determine where he's going to operate and most types of things. And since we should, we should probably name it the Harding bylaw or the Garrett bylaw or something because it's really, uh, he was the one that sparked this all. Um, which I think is wonderful, the entrepreneurial spirit. My question is, uh, it says also in the article that he had to get two million dollars worth of liability. Was that our requirement or was that outside of our requests?
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor, that is our requirement. Um, the, the I think the thought process is they're operating on our road rights of way if they cause damage. Um, they need to have liability insurance for that potential, potential problems.
And while I understand the theory behind it, it's, it seems a bit much for a push bike mobile ice cream cart to have to get liability. I would see it more for a, a motor vehicle. Um, so just some things to think about, but again, I think we're kind of moving away from making it easy to operate and trying to find every possible scenario, but I just, you want to be fair and you want to kind of create that, that environment where people choose to do these things, whereas they, you know, like Harding maybe didn't go for that extra application because it was just too much work and I don't want to, this is going to be a happy medium. So I look forward to this coming forward and more of these ventures in our community. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that concludes uh any questions of council and feedback and comments. So anyway, thanks to council for um the comments and thank you, Mr. Toll, for uh, for the presentation and all the work that went on and went on to it. So with that, I'll ask one of my colleagues on council to accept for information report on the mobile vending. Counselor Acker, go ahead.
I'd move that this report on an intended mobile vending strategy be received as information.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving forward into our into four B, excuse me, into four B is the Greenbury Plan Lot, GPL District Review.
Yeah. We have water. I'm sorry to interrupt. Can we please uh call the question and vote on that matter?
Just before you, just before you ask me, um, I just wanted to clarify that I haven't called the vote before you ask me. I'll call a question on motion. Thank you very much. Okay. Um, Greenberry Plan, Plan Lot back there to uh review and update on recommendations. That's under four B item. And uh, Mr. Nalavde is going to be doing that. Welcome, Mr. Nalavde.
Thank you, Mr.
Hope I said that right?
Yes, you did, sir. Uh, thank you for that and thank you, uh, council for this uh opportunity. Um, this evening's presentation is going to focus on providing council with an update on administration's review of the Greenberry uh Plan Lot District, and I'm just going to refer to that as GPL. Um, and to offer some recommendations uh with the broader objective of solving some of the issues that we may have heard. And also to open up opportunities for other developers to come into the community and build this product, which is currently only offered to one developer as a pilot project. Um, I'm going to initiate my presentation here. Okay, um, sorry. So just a bit of background, uh, the GPL district was initiated by Beaverbrook Communities and was adopted in June twenty seventeen as a pilot project uh with the purpose of developing zero side yard uh residential products in the Greenbury neighborhood. Uh, the pilot was limited to a very specific area within the Greenbury neighborhood and that's shown on the map. Um, the zero side yard concept uh in essence really allows the reduction of one side yard down to zero meters. And it allows you to build the building along that property line. And the other side yard therefore is increased to deal with um drainage issues and to register an easement uh that allows for foundation encroachments and allows for access and things like that. So that in essence is the zero side yard concept. Um, and it results in a saving of land and therefore um additional product that offers choice and a little bit more affordability. Since the adoption of that district, um, city of Spruce Grove has seen sixty-nine zero side yard developments, which include twenty-seven single detached homes and forty-two semi-detached dwellings. Um, administration's review focused on examining the development process for these units that were built as well as onsite construction issues that we noticed. Uh, we also consulted with U D I and C H V A group and mostly found that the results were largely positive and that the regulations were doing their work. Um, the review concluded with identifying some benefits and identifying some issues. So in terms of benefit, the biggest benefit of the zero side yard development is that it allows the city and the development industry to offer another compact, low-density development form, which uses less street frontage and saves land. In terms of issues, we found a few issues. Uh the first one was pertaining to real property reports. Uh when zero side yard developments are built, uh the reg- regulations require the home builders. To provide a real property report following the building of the foundation. Uh this is a very tight district with very little room for error. Um consultation with C uh with UDI and CHVA revealed that most of the members were complying with this request or requirement. But identified cost was a concern. Uh the city then went on to consult with uh some of the surveying companies to see what are the leading practices. We also got a legal opinion and all of them pointed to real property reports being the leading practice to ensure. Uh these tight developments are always in compliance because the moment you are not in compliance or erroneous, you're essentially in your neighbor's property. So this mechanism is working really well and administration is recommending to keep this requirement the way it is. The second issue we found was pertaining to site grading and drainage. Uh and the uh challenge is that these are very narrow lots and some of the developers were just struggling to find the grade and therefore they would have drainage issues. Uh but upon closer examination, we found that this was occurring due to home builders not grading the sites. According to the to their permit, rather than there being a challenge with the regulation. Uh the engineering department has been providing guidance uh to home builders to improve or solve these issue on sites. Uh and we anticipate as builders gain more experience with this new typology, that the situation will improve with some guidance. The third issue is a larger one and that pertains to street congestion and on-street parking. This issue of street congestion and parking is predominantly attributed to subdivisions with front-loaded or front-attached garages. This is not really a challenger, an issue with homes that are lane-based or have their garage being accessed from an alley. On-street parking is impacted or almost lost when we develop narrow lots. And these lots nowadays are eight and a half meters wide or seven and a half meter wide in the case of GPL. Uh with front-attached garages, uh where parking pads are almost six meters wide. And that leaves for very little space to create an on-street parking stall between adjacent lots. This situation worsens when we have front-attached garages on both sides of the street. As on-street parking on both sides is impacted. This is the case in Garnow Street, which is in the GPL District. Additionally, on garbage collection days, placement of garbage bins uh further exacerbates the situation, creating congestion where service vehicles. Or emergency vehicles may find it difficult to navigate uh through this uh through this congestion. Our biggest find is that this issue is not isolated to the GPL product. But rather, it is an issue that affects a lot of new neighborhoods where we are promoting these uh narrow compact lots that are also. Uh front-loaded or front with front-attached garages on both sides of the street. So we have a few recommendations. Um I am not going to uh read through the entire detailed regulation. I'm going to provide the objective because these uh regulations are currently a draft. Um and we are in in consultation with UDI on this item. So in order to address this issue of street congestion and parking to build better neighborhoods in the future. Uh we are suggesting uh that we should avoid subdivision of narrow lots. Uh less than ten meters or less without alleys on both sides of the street. Which means one side of the street would have a uh front-attached garage, the other side would be serviced by an alley. And this would mean that at least one side of the street will have continuous parking while the other may be impacted because of the. Driveway driveways and um access points. The other big recommendation we have is to promote a higher mix of development types on a street. Uh and limit the repetition of buildings with large massings such as semi-detached homes or row housings. Currently, we are observing that once developers start a street, they keep repeating a cookie cutter. And especially when that is done with larger bu- buildings like a semi-detached, which is two homes. Uh you get a street with a very little space between the units and you get these relatively large buildings. That are also uh having an impact on uh a- access and parking and things like that. So we have a series of regulations that require these developers to introduce a bit of a mix of developments. So after maybe fifteen, twenty homes, that you may have a wider home or a different type of home. And that makes the street more interesting. It uh you don't get a cookie cutter pattern um and overall you're building better neighborhood. So in conclusion, um the GPL uh district review found that the regulations were largely successful in implementing the pilot project with it. And the city and the development industry is over able to offer a new development type. Um the issues that were identified were not viewed as significant negative impacts. Uh or they are such that could be effectively managed by the use of better communication. Orbit changes to regulation to improve on-street parking outcomes. Based on the discussion in the report, administration intends to bring forward a land use bylaw amendment. For first reading that integrates the regulation of GPL District with the R one low to medium district, which is where most of our. Single detached semi-detached homes are built. Uh along with some new regulations to uh address on-street parking and street congestion for future subdivisions. With that, I will end my presentation. At the request of uh Counselor McKenzie, I do have some other diagrams from a uh presentation made by Colico in twenty eighteen. So all of that information is available here uh if you wish to refer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation and um and um. I thank you very much for administration to look at, you know, options to mitigate some of the issues that were identified. Uh you know, in the report. And uh you know how we're we're going to uh move forward with that. Um so before I make uh any comments, I'd like to open up the floor to my colleagues on council. Uh in regards to uh you some of the uh issues that we've heard, uh you know, from the community. And uh. I will open it up with that. Counselor Stevenson and then Counselor McKenzie and then Counselor Rock.
Great, thank you. So I I live in Greenberry and. I hear this is like a regular thing that I get tagged in. And we know that there's been issues with the uh the pilot project. So I'm finding this a little bit washed in terms of what is actually happening. Because one of the major problems that is still ongoing that we know is an issue is the easement. And access to people's backyards and even when I read here about um ensuring that easement allows. Access to both properties for maintenance, it's not just about maintenance when you want to go in your backyard. It's about. Enjoying your backyard and being able to get to your backyard. Um and that's an ongoing issue. Um so I want to know how this didn't make the report in terms of. This is a major concern because our bylaws written wrong and we have legal opinion saying as much. So why didn't that make it into this report?
Um so a couple of points, uh we had that one issue with one uh development where. Uh they were trying to use the easement to access their backyard and to move maybe a lawnmower or certain equipments. That particular file is um residing with the RGM, um Sir Lavaster, and he could speak to the details of that. What I can say is as far as the easement is concerned, as we move forward, we are going to review the template easements to make sure. They provide access as per the intent. Now, these um. Lots can be configured in a few different ways. One can be front-attached garage and you have to go through the side. You may also have a lane. So my understanding is that the easement and the language could be tailored to individual case. But I would just ask Corey to maybe speak to that one particular item. Thank you.
Or thank you, Punkage. Um i- in regards to this specific case, there was an issue raised. Because these were um sort of uh didn't have lean product and so they weren't lean product. They didn't have access through the through a lane. So a typical easement in most of the area in the GPL. Um had access to both front and back and had access through a lane. And so in this particular case that you're speaking about, um the easement document itself. Presented perhaps uh a little bit gray. And so as opposed to the bylaw being the issue, it's more in regards to the easement and neighbors uh getting along. And so um you know, in this particular instance, the developer is working with um. With the two homeowners to draft an amended agreement that perhaps both can agree with.
But this affects more than just them. It would be any instance that this easement. Like we built the pilot under this, so they would fall under this bylaw as it stands right now. So it's not just this. Group, it just so happens that they're aware of it, but anybody who runs into future problems, like if they have a dispute with their neighbor, we're going to have the same. Problem about access to it. So even in this, I have an issue with it, not just. It it like you have to have access to your backyard. It makes zero sense. So if it's one thing to have lane access, but if you don't have that. It makes zero sense for us to limit your ability to get into your backyard because you can't go across a one point five meter thing. My other question is though, is that we're talking about parking and that parking issues will be resolved if there's. Lane access. Well, I think Spruce Village is a classic example of that is not the case by any stretch of the imagination. Unless you're requiring, like we did similar on Pioneer Road where some of the row housing had garages built at the same time. But then that comes down to cost again. So you're either paying for a larger lot or you're now paying for the smaller lot with potentially. The garage being built in the back. So you know, uh we all have front garages, everyone parks in the summer. It's a problem. So I don't think, I think it would be nice of us to think that the issues we're seeing with parking and with. The garbage and stuff like that would be resolved just simply by making one side of the development. And like have lanes and stuff. So I'm a little concerned about that. The other thing I have though, again, it comes down to this philosophical question. We have different density targets than Edmonton. We are not Edmonton. People don't live in Spruce Grove to have Edmonton products. And we can meet our density targets currently without offering zero lot lines. And the question becomes, do we want zero lot lines in our city? Not every city offers them. There's, I think there's very few compared to how many actually don't. And up until this pilot project, I think administration actually recommended we don't do zero lot lines. We've done zero lot lines in the eighties. Uh there's examples of it in Grove Meadows. There's probably fallout from that. And I guess my biggest question is, is what is a pilot designed to do? Is the pilot designed to do to see about process and see if we can have developers. Follow it and like work the kinks out with administration or is a pilot project also lengthier? To see what the fallout is, to see what some of the concerns are one, two or three years afterwards. About drainage, about uh conflicts amongst the neighborhood. To me, the pilot, it it hasn't, it hasn't gone long enough because one of the missing pieces out of this entire thing is that. I I don't see any feedback from the residents. What do the residents think about it? What did they have to say about moving into a zero lot line area? What do people think about that increased density that could now happen everywhere in Spruce Grove? We haven't had that discussion. And I think ultimately, because it's been rejected so many times other than this pilot. Most people in Spruce Grove, I think, are probably against zero lot lines. So I'm really antsy to move forward with this until we've had more time to really experience. I I don't want to say fallout, but I want to understand. What happens because of that decision to even do the pilot and how that affects the rest of our growth. Because I'm not convinced it's an affordability issue at this point if we're raising fees. For them to develop it because they're just going to pass that cost on. So I'm not convinced that this is an affordability issue at all. And we have to really figure out what we want to do as a city. Like I don't want to just follow it. Because Edmonton offers zero lot lines or whatever community is. We really have to find, I think, for ourselves. What we as a community want to do and if we can still meet our density targets, our aspirations for EMRB without zero lot lines. I'm I'm hesitant at this point. So for me. I don't want to rule out zero lot lines in the future. I just don't think this pilot has had enough time. For us to really understand the implications. That was the word I was looking for. The implications from this pilot. I now only understand the process you went through. I don't understand. And have a full understanding of what implications would exist if we did open this up to everybody else. So I guess I'll leave my comments there for now.
Thank you very much. Um Counselor McKenzie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um through you to administration. Um I guess I I just have, I have a few questions. Um I'd like to start with uh number one. Back in two thousand seventeen and and I wasn't on council at that time, so I'm not too sure of the exact details. But right now, we're saying that we're at sixty nine lots that have been developed. Twenty seven are the single detached and forty two are semi-detached. What percentage is that sixty nine of the actual size of the original uh pilot project?
Through Mr. Mayor, um I'm not able to exactly give you that number, but looking at the built-out portion from the aerial photograph. I would say about forty percent of that small GPL district is uh nearing a built-out to thirty to forty percent.
So the actual project area was only then um about a hundred and forty lots.
Maybe uh or. That range.
Okay, I I you know, look, I find that hard to believe, but okay. Cause I just find sixty nine lots is is still pretty small uh over the course of three and a half, four years. Anyways, that's fine. What um? What I wanted to ask uh first off is I go back to February two thousand eighteen. Uh at that point, I was on council and we had a presentation come forward from two developers who wanted to. Get this moving and and basically we're at the stage that we're at now. Administration did not uh recommend that at the time. So I guess when I read the concerns and I read this, I really don't see what has overly changed. To make administration say, yes, let's move ahead with this. So can you just really tell me what what are the major significant changes that you feel? That has been demonstrated over the last two years that administration has now changed its recommendation?
Uh through Mr. Mayor, Counselor McKenzie, um I I was not at the Feb twenty eighteen uh meetings, I apologize, but I had the, I've had the opportunity to read the report. I think what has changed substantially is we've had about three years of development time. And we've had substantially more number of units developed between uh Feb twenty eighteen and now. So we now have about sixty, seventy products on the ground and that gives us enough opportunity to go. See their development approval process and see what jumped out. We also went to sites to see what were the onsite problems and now there's a a body or a mass of developments that allows us to understand. That this is not a one-off problem and we see a problem that it is a typology-based problem. So I think we've had a better opportunity to study all the developments that have gone on the ground. Simultaneously, I think we've also had the opportunity to make some improvements on other fronts. For example, we are making improvements to the quality of lanes so that we are able to provide. Uh servicing and garbage pickup and all these things through the lanes and that that service does not fall onto the main street. So the the effort uh to kind of making this typology work, it has multiple uh sort of uh feat. To to say that. Um I think um. Between two twenty seventeen and twenty, June twenty seventeen and Feb twenty eighteen, you you've you would have had only six to seven months. So you would have at the most have had maybe twenty, thirty units. So that, I think, is the big difference. And I think we've had a lot of uh sort of pressure from the market and developers to say, well, you have one. Developer that is able to do this typology and maybe that opportunity should be more equitable to other developers in the market. So we took the view of saying, what are the issues? Can we solve some of these issues and move forward? And as I spoke to my issues, I actually said that some of the issues are not just GPL, that they're. They are a issue facing a lot of the newer neighborhoods when it comes to uh congestion and on-street parking and so on and so forth. So I think time, more number of units are the key key differences between Feb twenty eighteen and uh September twenty twenty.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Um ironically, I think you segue into two of my other questions. So um I'll go with your last statement where you said that we've actually realized that the these are not just the concerns in the GPL, but they are in other areas. So I guess one of my questions is, at the same time that we're going to be, if if potentially we move forward and we're doing this, are we also then going to look at those other areas? That have have the congestions and start adding in lanes and that sort of thing. I think it. It goes back to one of my concerns that I always have about our engineering standards and what we actually are expecting of developers. Cause I would love to see lanes proposed in those other areas as well and just get rid of this zero line, but anyways. You know, that is my my concern. So are we actually going to look at those? um, you know, that is my, my concern. So are we actually going to look at those other areas at the same time? Cause I don't see that being proposed here.
Uh, through Mr. Mayor, Counselor McKenzie, uh, my recommendation number one, actually, if you um, should I go back to the regulation if that could help? I will. I'm just gonna go back to my presentation here for a second. You see uh this slide where it says avoid subdivision of narrow lots without alleys on both sides. I do not make reference to zero lot line. What I'm saying is subdivisions proposing lots that are narrower than ten meters, including zero lot line developments shall be limited to providing front attached products on one side. And so I'm suggesting that once the lots become narrower than ten meters and you introduce a double car pad in there, you have a problem. And so we should really look at these narrow subdivisions as a group that needs a high order regulation uh and not everybody else. And it's not strictly a GPL issue either because quite frankly, the Gorno Street uh which was cited as a, as an issue does not have any zero lot line products. It is actually preceding the zero lot line products. So it was very easy for us to understand where these things are happening. And it's partly happening in Gorno Street because there was supposed to be a lane that has not been built. I'm not sure why. About for whatever reason, we've ended up with a street that shows us front attached garages on both sides. So yes, the recommendation is for the broader uh group of narrow lot subdivisions.
Perfect. And, and I, I apologize because now when I read that, yes, you're not mentioning the GPL. And I know on the slide before that you had said it, the issues is not limited to just the GPL. Um, and so I think that, but when you go back to that, your comment there about, you know, having um the front attached garage only on one side of the street and parking on the other. Again, it goes back to concerns and issues that I have of once people move in and, and all of a sudden, yeah, I have, I have my front drive there. And you know what? I'm just gonna park across the street because there's parking there. And then my neighbor across the street is upset because he's now, you know, so I, it just really worries me when you have that um less uh ability to park when you have those front attached, you know, whether it's no parking on one side or not. Um, so I don't know if that is a solution that will truly, uh, you know, and and, and it goes back to Counselor Stevenson's question. And I think my, my biggest disappointment with this whole thing is a pilot project is we have administrations review, which I think is great. And I think it is some of the proposals that you're offering and, and changes are great. But did the city at, go at, out at all and survey the residents?
Um, through Mr. Mayor, Counselor McKenzie, uh, no, we did not. Um, uh, that was not the direction and we haven't. Um, what I would say is that um we are also starting to allow some new compact development types. Like we had the fourteen foot town that has come into play. And this path might, we may go down this path. So if we are to do a resident survey, maybe it is more fair to look at a broader picture than to target one particular item. So I think, I think some of these concerns about parking and what maybe are completely fair, we are, what we are recommending is an incremental step uh so that the development industry is not in a shock that you're just changing the rules on us. Uh, it's an incremental step based on analysis that when we have a front attached um garage subdivision that we do lose street parking. So we are able to see that clearly and therefore the regulation. So uh to your uh question, we have not um uh consulted with the residents. Uh, but I think we should have a more broader view if we really are going there to understand what are the other problems that we can solve through design as much as possible.
Okay. So, so I guess for me, a pilot project and especially of this caliber where I do believe, you know, within any of the presentations and the documentations, we talk about resident education and understanding when you have a new person purchasing, you know, that second homeowner that comes in and they don't understand that this is a shared easement or that they don't get access to their garage or that that, you know, the parking is, is difficult. Um, so I just really believe that we, you know, before moving forward, I would really feel more comfortable getting some of that survey data in order to make a decision as to whether we move forward with this. So I would really like to see that sort of information. Um, and I, and I guess too, um, or I'll ask this, this other question and then I have one other question. Um, so if we did move forward with this and we made this approval, the current pilot project, if it is only forty percent built out, would we then have them make amendments to any of the future layout coming forward to make sure that we are getting the lane or we're getting those things to ensure that it's following the new or would this, the current pilot project area still not have to follow what your, what administration is recommending?
Every subdivision, sorry, um, through Mr. Mayor, Counselor McKenzie, um, every subdivision that is approved and registered today will not have to follow that because this new regulation that we are writing is meant to influence the subdivision design of a new block. But within that uh remainder of the, of the GPL district, every new subdivision that will come forward will have to um adhere to the regulations of the day. So if we approve these new regulations and a subsequent stage comes forward, uh, they will have to do whatever the regulations are and the way that they are approved. So that is how it would be. What it would, the big change you would see is you might see a number of subdivisions throughout the community that are trying to promote this product. Uh, because it does offer a new product type that may have some marginal price differences or what may be, but it is a choice in the market. So you may see a number of subdivisions that may show interest in wanting to do these products.
Okay. Now my final question is, and I know you made reference to, I had asked for a documentation from the two thousand eighteen meeting. Uh, and it comes from Qualico presentation and um Counselor Stevenson asked the question about it and, and I guess I'm just, I was confused as to the answer um on the current uh understanding of the shared easement. And so I, if you could bring up that the, because it, to me, it's a great picture that Qualico presented. And I, I believe, and again, I was not on council in two thousand seventeen when it was um approved. But I do believe that there definitely was a understanding from this pilot project that that shared easement would then give each uh property owner access to their backyard through a fence in between their yards or in between the houses. And when you truly look at this one that's being proposed, and this was basically where we're at today and moving forward. And I believe that this again speaks to what the intent of this was. So when I look at that, it, it flat out says one point five meter easement shared. Now I know that currently with some of the, some of the residents in these areas, there's a huge understanding and it's been going through lawyers and reviews of, you know, real property reports and looking at different things. Explain to me again, just so I understand where the disconnect was. Is it with the developer? Is it with the city missing something? Is it because we are having these major issues going on right now with the residents in that area? So again, if we're not surveying the residents, it, it, things can look great on paper. But once you get in there and you're living it, it may not necessarily work. And so I just, I just question as to what exactly is going on in the current pilot project?
Corey, did you want to speak?
Sure. Thank you, Punkage. So in regards to this um very specific issue, um, uh, again, this easement document that's registered on title is basically an agreement between the homeowners that purchased there um as to what the easement is for. The city's responsibility or, or duty for that easement is to ensure that it runs with the property as owners change. This particular easement document has been supplied by the developer and it has been used in other municipalities. Uh, but this, this specific incident that we're uh discussing is testing that easement. And so there are various um opinions legally. Um, but in order to truly get the sense of what the easement is, is designed for or implies, there would have to be um a legal decision or a judge, judge decision or an order that would say you haven't, you have a, a right to that uh use of that land or not for access to your back property. Um, so some of the opinions range from you have, you have the ability to maintain your property or maintain the um improvement uh as by accessing easement. So that would typically mean the dwelling in some, in some opinions. On the flip side, the developer has probably morbid this, printed out brochures, letting people know that they have access to their lot. And this is where the easement becomes tested. And so it's a template easement that's been used all over the place. Um, but when, when the neighbors uh start to not agree with each other, then it becomes tested. And so this is why in this particular instant, the developer has actually taken it upon himself to um, to almost negotiate amended agreement for these parties. And for this particular stretch of road in order to mitigate future issues because this doesn't have a, a lane access, so they couldn't drive a lawnmower to the back or, or what have you. Uh, they've committed to sort of uh amending some of the existing easements where people aren't currently living. And so this is the process that we're working through. And so because the easements are relatively new, because it's pilot project, these are some of the, the uh learnings that we have as an organization or as a city uh based on um somebody actually living at that site or living in.
Okay. So I, I, I think it then goes back to uh myself as a counselor and moving forward, wanting to make a decision on this. I think I'd like to hear from the people living in a pilot project within my community to find out how this is working. Um, these developments are often first time homeowners, home buyers. Um, and uh often when you're buying a home, even if it's in, in, without the zero lot line, there's always, you know, uncertainties and, and developers and, and, and the home builders, they're in the market to sell. And I'm not saying that they're not saying the truth, but to explain what you just explained, um, you know, in all honesty, for me, even I, I do think that I understand it and yet I kind of felt like I was on Mr. Lavaster's airlines. It's kind of going over my head. And, and it makes it difficult, right? And uh so I struggle with making this decision of moving forward and, and having more of these without truly listening to the people in our community that have, have been there. Um, you know, but thank you. Uh, I appreciate you guys' work on this. Um, at this time, I, I, I really find that I'm, I don't believe that I would be in support of moving forward and uh with the zero lot line still uh within our community, I think that uh Spruce Grove can offer a lot of great things. And in COVID, we're learning people do want a little bit of backyard and um there's reasons why people move out to the burbs. Um, and, and, and I like, and I, I've been proud. I, I drive through Broxton Park, which is an old, old area and those backyards, they're beautiful and we have lanes on both sides. And um that sort of thing. And I get that the developers need to be cutting and we need to be figuring out and maximizing on our land space. But I just feel that we can't be doing it at the cost of the residents and causing disagreements and extra fights and that sort of thing within our communities. We had a presentation today about how COVID is bringing out some bad things with our RCMP and talking about some of the things. So let's, let's try to make things um easy. So thank you.
You're, you're often referencing Gorno Street. Are you referring to Gorno Gate? Um, cause I'm very familiar with the area, but you're continually saying Gorno Street. Is there a difference from Gorno Street to Gorno Gate?
Uh, I, I may have entered. I would have to take a look at the maps, but uh it is the only street. Yes, it is Gorno Gate.
My apologies. Okay, Gorno Gate. Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Um. So we got a couple of things going on here. One is the, I think you as a council wanted to say, see, okay, there's a new form of housing. There's an opportunity to understand the implications. And there was a decision to allow a pilot, which is in a sense become more than a pilot. It's become a form that one uh developer actually has a, a strategic advantage over other developers. So that it's created that dynamic. The second piece is this conversation is about what he wants Spruce Grove to be. And so um historically, the city has grown on the basis that it's the, a market attractive. And whatever market attractive is, it's market attractive. And other communities have made decisions to follow different routes. Now with that, you've also got the situation that um cities can't afford to buy, build uh houses on fifty foot lots anymore because they actually can't afford to maintain infrastructure that comes with a fifty foot lot unless the assessment on the house is like a million bucks. So there's a, there's, there's a whole bunch of levers pulling here, which is what is the design you want that is actually quality of life, but actually is efficient in its use versus what is market availability? And you, you, this conversation is playing across those two themes. Administration has provided you a report about how you can tweak the market debate. This, that's all this is. It's tweaking the market to respond to the market. If, if you're the EMRB hundred dot, hundred units per hectare is irrelevant, you can achieve that in fifty-five different ways. Uh, you know, a single, you know, a ten-story building. Um, three of those in the city and you can have sixty foot lots. There's no, it's, it's such a low number. It's, it's, it's irrelevant. Um, so if you truly want to have sort of a conversation about future urban form, then this, this conversation doesn't take place at the uh lot, lot design size. It's a different conversation with the community about what it is you want Spruce Grove to be. And it's a staged process and it's probably something you do after the next election and not before. Um, but, but then that sets you up in terms of, then you, then you build policy to support whatever that answer is. But, but I, you know, the administration at the moment is geared to drag efficiency out of uh front foot, front foot yardage. Because that's where the cost of development is. It's not in the depth of the lot. It's in the narrowness of the lot. And if you can narrow that down, then you get a cheaper lot and you get a cheaper house. Um, and that is, that is basically in, it's a contradictory environment. You, you, you can't go higher density and still have, have, you know, houses with three trucks. It just does not work. And so if you're gonna design a community around a vehicle, you're not gonna have very, very narrow lots. If you're gonna design a community around people and the car takes a bit of a second uh focus, then you're gonna have a different design. And if you're gonna uh maintain a, a, you know, a particular niche in the market that isn't trying to cater to low cost, you're gonna have another, a different design to that. But with the moment you're struggling with is that you're trying to be all things to everybody. You're trying to be market competitive. You're trying to have high quality. And you're trying to make sure that everybody can have, you know, a couple of RVs and a couple of trucks. It doesn't add up. It just doesn't add up. And so all these conversations are gonna be really frustrating for you and staff because they can't, they can't pull rabbits out of hats. So the bigger question is, is, is not whether you have two hundred lot units of uh zero lot line or not. The easement piece can be resolved. That's just poor easement writing. That's just, it's, that's just poor work. Simple as that. Cause that's not a, there's, you know, there's, you know, multi hundreds of people living in communities where they don't have any easement issues. So that's, that's just poor work. Um, so that can be resolved. That's a mechanical thing. Um, but it's, it's a, it's poor work because it's around people wanting to do things fast and quick and cheaply. And so they just throw, you know, somebody, somebody else's easement on the docket and there you go. So I think, you know, and I'm, I'm going on a bit and I apologize, but you're not, you're gonna find yourselves being frustrated if you don't answer some of the bigger questions. Because this, 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 the, the process is, is dragging you deeply into the detail. And it's not the detail that will answer the questions. It's what's your philosophy? If you, if, you know, if you, if you want Spruce Grove to be market competitive and that is driving your decision making, you're gonna have zero lot lines. Um, because that's what the market wants. If, if, if that's not your view, vision of Spruce Grove, then you've got to be really clear with the industry about what your vision is and what you want to achieve. And they will adapt to that. They will respond to it. But if you're sending them contradictory messages, they'll, they'll drive to the bottom line. It's, you know, it's, it's just normal business.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for that, Simon. And, and one of the reasons what I, I wanted to uh connect with uh Mr. Nanap Nalavde on uh in regards to the uh, the parking issues that relate to Garnow Gate. And um I can tell you, I live that area because my son lives on Garnow Gate. I'm there all the time and I'm in and out of the zero lot line because I'm really paying attention to what that looks like in the community. And uh what I am finding is the parking issues are on Garnow Gate where we have the larger homes with a double attached front garages on both sides. And there's people parking in their driveways. Uh, not everybody parks in their garage for sure. But on the big homes, not the zero lot line homes, but on all the big homes uh that back on at the Storm Ponds, we've got double attached and then you've only got uh, you know, four or five feet in between the two garage pads. So when I go there at night and my son has his boat in the driveway and his truck on the part of the street, like I actually have a hard time finding a place to park and, and it's not, not the issue up the road where the zero lot line product starts. But I think the, the, the reality of, of what we've tried to do with uh, with the market and to be market competitive in the region to uh attract young families to our community. Uh, we talked about the fact that the very fact of the matter is why Beaver Brook has an advantage is because they're able to allow to have a um a shorter frontage uh on their lots and it's uh four feet, which equals about twelve to fourteen thousand dollars in that range. It makes the very same house that's built in uh Copperhaven uh exactly fourteen thousand dollars cheaper in, in wood, in, in that area. Um, I, I, I totally agree with uh, with Simon on the, on the poor uh definition of what that easement would mean on a, on a uh, on a duplex lot. And that, that's got to be corrected. But uh, you know what? I, based on the information that uh, you know, that administration is providing, you know, there may be a philo- philosophical distance, difference on council and say, I don't want to have any zero lot lines. That's not what I want Spruce Grove to be. And, and that's a, that's a, a discussion that we have to have. But I think when we went down this road, it was the opportunity for the city to provide a, a range of uh housing types and uh, and we're moving into some of those. We did that with the bylaw last week as Mr. Nalavde indicated. That's going to be um, you know, that will be also uh, you know, will exacerbate what we, we deem to be parking. But, but if you go into the current zero lot line and, and, and I, I appreciate council wants to hear from the residents that live in there. But on the duplex side, there's really no parking issues over there. Uh, when you go around the corner, um, you know, because they have larger front driveways and people are parking on their driveways. But the issues which uh administration are bringing forward that relate to um, you know, having double attached garages only on one side of the street and then rear lane product on the other. Yeah, that, that is, it's an answer to some of the problems that are related to not zero lot line, but the entire community. So I'm happy to hear that. But I think um, you know, we'll, I'll uh, I'll defer the floor back to council for, for questions and comments. But uh, you know, I think uh, you know, I wanted to clarify on where some of the main, main issues are. It's not on the zero lot line on Garnow, Garnow Gate. It's, it's the actually, it's on, on the big homes. But at any rate, um, Council Roth was next and then Council Gilkey. Council Roth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm afraid that my comments will be, will not be terribly complimentary to this plan or this type of development. In fact, what I'm going to say will be very similar to the um prior to you speaking, the, the two council members who spoke before. I'm talking about, I'm not talking about Mr. Farbrother. I'm talking about the council members who preceded him, who actually have a vote in this matter. But I don't think that this experiment has been as successful as this report makes it out to be. In fact, I would call it unsuccessful, uh bordering on being a failure. I think we probably all got an email last evening from was one resident who complained mainly about a lack of access to her backyard through a side yard where she has a dispute with a neighbor. I, I, also I think that some of us have been contacted by other residents who have to live with these zero lot line projects. I got a call from one resident whose comments I'll reference shortly. I, 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 I see there has been some consultation with the development community and the development industry. I suppose that's a good thing, but that's the most biased group to be asking if this type of development is working. Uh, developers want to maximize their profits and will do that by trying to cram as much product into as small an area as they possible, as they possibly can. Uh, then it becomes the problem of the residents. And they're the ones who have to deal with the consequences, not the development community and not so much the city of Spruce Grove either. Uh, the other resident who talked to me uh mentioned a litany of problems, including, yes, the zero side yards, uh parking congestion, uh water drainage, garbage collection. And in one case, a conflict with a neighbor for me to support. And I'm going to repeat what uh Counselor Stevenson and Counselor McKenzie have said about seeking uh the opinions of the residents who have, actually have to live in these neighborhoods. Because I saw nothing in the report about that. And the only residents who we have heard from are residents who have reached out to council members uh either as a group or, or individually, and they're not terribly complimentary to this type of development. So I want to be able to see the comments. I want to know that residents have been consulted. And I want to know what their comments have been, good and bad. I suspect that there will be more bad comments than, than positive comments. Based on what I think we've been hearing, I think it's wrong to ignore the residents' concerns, except for those residents who take the time to reach out to council members and state, tell us how it's working or how it's not working. So for me to support any uh, any go forward on this, I want to be able, I want to know that residents have actually been contacted. And I want to know what, what they're, what they, what they're saying. It's been called a survey. Uh, I'm not sure if a survey is the right term or the right way to go about it. I just want to know that residents uh feel that they've been contacted and that they've had an opportunity to tell us how it's working. And so that council members can consider more input from just the one or two or three residents who have taken the time to reach out for us, to us. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Council Gilkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. I will agree that uh what Mr. Farbrother had said was that we need to have a bigger discussion. And that is definitely something that we need to do. And I think we have done over the last few years. We having had to live with the decision of council pass to uh see this pilot project through. Some of the things that I was looking for out of the pilot project were successes in parking, successes in grading, success in garbage removal and success in education. And this report indicates that there's been challenges in all four of those major aspects. What else is there really when we're talking about um new development? Those are the things that are important. And when we're having challenges in all four of those major issues and only thirty percent of the pilot project built out, that is not a successful pilot project, in my opinion. Um, although I appreciate that we are learning, it is at the expense of our residents. And so while we have indicated that, you know, we might do mixed development, well, we've done that already in Spruce Village and we've abandoned that pilot project as well. Um, and we recognize that these issues have followed us, but yet we continue to make the same decisions over and over again and expect a different result. So I don't see myself supporting it at this time. I know that that's not the decision tonight. Um, as, and I understand that this developer has a competitive advantage, but they also have a number of challenges that they have to get through in order to make this successful. So um, things aren't always greener on the other side. Um, obviously the education was not done well when we're talking about this easement. This easement was poorly written, but yet no one has decided to take ownership of it. We are pointing fingers at the developer, the developers trying to make this go away or make it better. But when do we just get to the point where we take ownership of it if we can and just make it right? Cause that's what I would want if it was me. Um, and it's not an isolated issue because it is the easement for the whole area. And if one homeowner has made it an issue for their neighbor, they won't be the last until we get it resolved. So I would hope that our administration would work hard with our developer to make that right. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, uh, Council Gilkey. And, and while we're on that topic uh that you referred to, and I, I want to not lose that thought because I think it's going to be uh brought forward again. I think the question related to the one easement that was um, that there's two different opinions on it. One that the city has an opinion uh that the homeowner should have the ability to access their backyard for maintenance of, maintenance of their lawn or maintenance of their uh, their uh storm uh swale or whatever they have. And uh, you know, the developer uh has um, you know, uh, the way it's written uh is, isn't clarified. At this point, at this stature, like we are hoping that our uh, the developer will get an agreement between the two homeowners. But barring that, uh, can the city go back in to amend uh a bylaw to force this easement? Or is that going to be subject to a legal challenge, I guess is the question. What's our next step if they can't get to an agreement? Because we've got some frus- we got, we have one frustrated person over there that's probably tuning into this, Mr. Lavassar. Uh, can we handle this uh as a, as a bylaw amendment uh after the fact? Or is this a developer issue?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so the, the easement itself is not the bylaw. So there wouldn't need to be amendment to the bylaw. There needs to be an amendment to the easement. Now, a- again, we're getting into the legal aspects of this, but it, it is a civil matter between neighbors. And so the easement is there for their benefits. And, and so it grants easement of one to the other uh who's the owner. And so, and if they can't come to an agreement, then they have to go through the proper proceedings to figure out who's right and who's wrong. And then uh the new agreement could be drafted from that point based on the decision.
Hey, well, the first, first thing is stop the bleeding, which is no more easements get approved under this structure. Right. And the principle of the easement is that you have access to the rear of your property and the storm. Because the easement basically acts as a, a building separation for fire code. And it acts as a conduit for storm runoff.
Yeah.
From either front to back or back to front property. And so it stops somebody putting something in that area to prevent that. But it, it's, I'm, I'm sure the intention wasn't to say uh one property owner ha- has access and the other doesn't. So that can be resolved. Um, going back into the previous, the existing easements, the that's more problematical and uh, but with willing parties, it could easily be resolved because you can rewrite it as long as people sign. And I would think that most people would, would agree to do that. You do occasionally come across um individuals that aren't as accommodating.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to uh Council Acker and then Council Oldham.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And I won't bring up the easement issue because I think it's been talked about a lot, but I'm glad we're looking at correcting what we're at and looking forward to preventing this issue in the future because I think it's really important. Cause at the end of the day, the residents are going to phone the city and complain. They're going to phone their developer and they're going to fight with their neighbor. We're at the end of the day going to be getting all the concerns and complaints. So we got to figure this out. And I appreciate it's a process and hopefully it works out, but let's make sure it doesn't happen again. So on my opinions, when I've listened to my colleagues and I looked at the report, I have, have a similar opinion that I don't think it's as as successful as it is being presented. And, and just simply from the fact that it started in twenty seventeen, if your numbers are right, it's forty percent developed. We already have complaints of the seventy that are there. Well, that's telling me we got a problem. And I understand you've identified drainage, you know, parking. I don't know what the other issue was, but drainage or parking is, is solutions and that's good. Um, but I'm not convinced that I'm ready to be prepared to extend this out to all the R1 districts in the city. I think we would like, I think we need a more thorough pilot project. I don't think it's expired yet. I think we need to see how this develops. And I think we need to have more comprehensive program when we do pilots that includes some residential feedback that looks at sale data of the hoses. Have these flipped six times in the three years? Well, there may be an issue of, of something. But we, we, we able to grab some metrics and get a better holistic understanding rather than just a planning view of it, but actually a quality of life and residential view and get a more holistic approach on that. So that'd be good if we can look at something to that point. Um, and just made a bunch of notes. So yeah, I guess I'm, I'm in the same ballpark as majority council. I don't think we're ready for extending this until we see some of these challenges corrected. But I do have one question. You've identified we have issues in this pilot development. What are we doing to mitigate the existing problems to the existing homeowners? Dealing with parking, dealing with drainage issues. Now you've identified that it was a great issue with some of the developments on the developer side. Are we forcing them to go back in and regrade them? Are those already signed off? Uh, I think I looked on the Google Maps and there's a rear lane on one side of the gate. Are we asking people in the back to park somewhere back there, put a lot in their backyard? So are we doing any mitigation steps right now in the pilot project or in this development to solve some of the problems that you did identify?
Uh, through, through Mr. Mayor, Council Acker, uh, yes, that is exactly right. Uh, every time we have developers that uh come to the city for a grading approval, uh, a city engineer or a tech goes out, um identifies the issues, works with them to say how it can be solved. Uh, as I indicated sometime in my presentation, that this is a new typology. It's a narrow lot. So it is a bit of a, a learning curve for the, for the home builders as well. Uh, but yes, um, I, I was able to do one visit myself where the engineer was uh suggesting they have a number of lots have read on their grading and now they're passing. So the knowledge and experience is improving. So we are able to solve that problem. Um, in terms of parking, uh, there is that one um sort of lane where we have a number of semi detached uh homes that have uh front attached garages. And there are no parking issues and there are no parking issues because that street has no parking allowed on the street. Uh, so in one ways, there is, so we have taken away. So we have taken away an amenity, the road width and the cross section is designed to have parking on it. So yes, there, there is a need for this philosophical question as to what do our subdivisions and neighborhoods need to look like. Uh, we are at this point at trying to work out the mechanics so that can we make this product work? Because it has been working in other, other places. Uh, as I indicated previously, right away, the moment we had the easement issue, uh, very next subdivision we get, we are going to fix that issue. So it is a process of continuous improvement for us, uh, which, so we are trying to do the best uh based on the options and avenues available to us constantly.
Perfect. And then on the philosophical point, I think affordability is something we need to look for, being market competitive. And uh have range of options for people purchasing a new home or building a new home as first grow. I love that idea. But I'm not willing to sacrifice some of the benefits of community. And you know, you go into some neighborhoods and because of the ways developed, neighbors fight with neighbors. They're all angry. There's, it creates more conflict than a good design may have resolved. So I always want to push, you know, your department is finding ways to make that design, mitigate a lot of those concerns and, and parking is probably the number one. We've developed a lot over the last couple of years and some of them very quickly with different standards and lots of front driveways that we have issues in existing communities right now and neighborhoods where parking is a daily struggle where people are moving their car at three in the morning and reserving parking. And then when their wife comes home, moving into the garage, it's just a weird way of living. And I, if there's ways we can resolve some of those with some of your design suggestions, like the garages on one side, lane access on the other. I'm really happy to see those opportunities. So, so thank you very much for the presentation. I'm, I'm not comfortable moving it to the entire community until we iron out a couple of these issues and see how it develops a little further. But uh, I appreciate your take on it. Thank you.
Okay, Council Oldham.
Thanks, Mayor. And just through you really quick, uh, I agree with the majority of what my council colleagues have said. I don't need to repeat it all. We do have to understand this affects people's lives and the easement situation affects people's lives uh and causes stress. And all these decisions that we make, where we don't understand the full implications has created stress for our residents. Unintentional, yes, but it's real and it's people are living that stress and we need to be mindful of that. Uh, we, hearing that this is only thirty to forty percent built out uh is just crazy to me that we would move forward because we only understand the implications when it's thirty to forty percent built out. We need to get this eighty to ninety plus percent. 80 to 90 plus percent built out, give it a year, and then understand the implications, poll the residents when it's fully built out. And I, I'm not willing to rush it at this point. And we've been on this for a long time, so I'll leave it at that. But we're, in my mind, we're a long way from being able to move forward with this product in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Councilor McKenzie, you wanted to speak again?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I just, Mr. Farbrother, you spoke right after I did and you made a few comments. And I just want to speak to one of them because you had indicated that, you know, you, you actually said that we should be looking at this and we should be accepting this in our communities if we want. And you know, based on which direction we want to go. Where I struggle with that, and so I just quickly grabbed our latest building permits. And I was able to look at and I just quickly grabbed the numbers from 2018, 19, and 20. And currently, like this pilot project is 69 lots. We actually have built in 18, 19, and up to 2,568 building permits. So if you do the 69 out of that, we're only at a 12%. So to talk about how we're losing the other industry is not being able to be competitive. And I get that. But obviously to me, if like the singles detached is only 8%, it's 27 out of 332 units that we've been at. The, yes, the semi-detached, it is at an 18%. But that is over a course of two and a half years. It is only at 18%. So where I'm struggling is it'd be different if, you know, that this pilot project was fully built out in two and a half years, but it's not. And so I just I took, and I'm trying not to, but I did take a little bit of exception to the way that that was presented right after I had spoke because yes, I, well, you know, I'm all for looking at the different demographics within our community. I know that we have homelessness and we need different, different levels of housing within our areas, but to say that, you know, we're losing out on a market or that we need to have this in order to for our, our community to be vibrant, I really struggle with that. So I just wanted to speak to that, that really, in two and a half years, the 69 units is only 12% of what we have actually built in our community. Thank you.
So just really quickly. One of the realities in is put your hand up to speak and this probably should make this comment generally, just when I speak, it's not because I'm speaking to the person that has just spoken. I'm actually speaking to the topic. So it has nothing to do with who actually spoke immediately before. That's typically the circumstance. And secondly, I wasn't so if it came across that way, I wasn't saying we all I was expressing was if you the development industry is saying that this is a piece of product that they want to sell. If you, if you are designing your community around the development industry, then you will supply that product. But I also said is that if you want to design the community as you believe it should be, then you need to have that broader discussion. So I just, I'm sorry, I wouldn't want you to believe that I made any suggestion that you should build it just because the industry says that's actually probably not the best strategy in the world because the industry will flow. You know, it's a market driven scenario and sometimes the market doesn't go very well.
Yes. And thank you for that clarity because that, that was definitely the impression that I received from the way that you had had question or made the comment that we should be putting this in our community. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Related to, you know, the market affordability, you know, for new residents coming in, I think that it's important for us to, you know, provide a range of housing options and a range of affordability for people because, you know, while some may say that you know, I, I think, I think one of the things that I've often thought about is what kinds of communities are we building for our citizens that move here? And what's their quality of life going to be like when they, when they get here? I think the decision to study the pilot project is, is the majority of, you know, sounds like majority of council would like to do. And like to get a better understanding, you know, related to, you know, how to fix some of, you know, some of the issues that that were before us. But, you know, I do appreciate the, the comments of looking at other new developments in, in new areas that will alleviate the problem that we experienced on Garnet Gate, which has nothing to do with the zero lot line product, but it has to do with with parking issues in the community. So anyway, I'd like to say, you know, one of the things that the developers will tell you and is that they will sell products, they're able to sell lots and products based on a market. And the market right now in this area is, is calling for zero lot line and councils made it pretty clear. There's lots of lots in Spruce Grove for zero lot lines. So let's get those filled up. But you know, the other fact is, we also have probably a good couple of years supply of of the larger lots too that are available in Spruce Grove. And we see a market trend where we are losing some of our market share. And, you know, some members of council will say they're happy with that. They're happy with not having new new development. And that starts to relate to some of the challenges that we're having with permitting and, and those kind of things. So we want to be competitive. We want to be, but we want to, I get from council that we want to, you know, have a community that we want to, you know, see for the future residents and have one that respects the quality of life. So with that, thanks everyone for your comments and questions related to that. And with that, I will ask for a, and I'll be sure to vote on this one. I'll ask for a, someone to accept for information, the GPL lot product. Report. Councilor Grillke, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that the Greenbury planned lot, GPL district review update be received as information.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilor Grillke. With that, I will call the question on the motion. Okay, thank you. That's been carried. Moving forward, I'd like to get a motion going to closed session. I, Councilor Acker.
I'll move the council meeting closed session under section 24 of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, respecting advice from officials.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, I'll call the question on the motion. Okay, that Councilor Stevenson didn't vote. Oh, she did now. Thank you. So that's been carried. And you have a opportunity to call into a closed session. So we're going to leave this meeting and we're going to go into a breakout room. And we're going to say goodbye to the public for now. That'll be it for evening for, for public consultation and all the comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We're back in session. Can I get a motion from Council Roth, please to extend our meeting past 11 o'clock in open session?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moved by Council Roth that we extend our meeting past 11:00 PM as per our policy. Thank you very much. I'll call a question on the motion. Call those in favor. Thank you. That's been approved. Thank you very much that we don't have any information coming out of closed session. So what I'd like to do is call for one more motion to adjourn. Council Stevenson.
Yeah, motion to adjourn, please.
Okay, move by Council Stevenson to adjourn. Thank you very much, everyone, for the discussion this evening. We have a lot of fish in the frying pan and let's, you know, let's thank our administration for the number of balls they have to juggle and all the things that we ask them to do and that they do do. So anyway, thanks very much, everyone, for the feedback.
We haven't voted. We haven't voted on that motion.
So let's, we have a motion to adjourn. So let's call the question on the motion. Thanks very much. Good night, everyone.
Good night.